First item on the agenda, just checking to make sure we have a quorum and we do. Let's go around the room and introduce ourselves, starting with Tim.
Tim Cersey, Finance Director.
Shane Blazer, Mayor.
Dan Hossen, Police Chief.
Jay Bemke, District Eight.
Patrick Delaney, District Seven.
Dennis Pollak, Six Ward.
Jake Hatton, District Five.
Tom Riome, District Four.
Matt Zachar, District Three.
Dean Veneman, District Two.
Ryan Austin, District One.
Todd Eckes, Fire Chief.
So who wants to go first, Fire or Police? We're going with Fire first? Oh, that's right, I remember that now.
Yeah, actually, I asked to go first, thank you, I got another meeting.
Take it away.
My budget and your whole packet starts on page forty. It's split out Fire first, then EMS, and then there is a summary of both Fire and EMS together, and then whatever's an outlay, so. Page, top of page forty, that first section there, the wages and benefits, really, we don't have any control over that, that's contracted, or FICA and things like that. The one thing we, we did do is reduce the overtime, cut it basically in half of what it was. As long as we get our personnel and we have them in place, the chances of, of us having to have overtime is a lot less. We spent this year with, you know, six months of personnel admin leave, we had a couple injuries, and we never got our three firefighters that were allocated until probably almost April or May, by the time they were done with their schooling and stuff, so that's what drove it up this year. Move down to operating expenditures, again, took one hundred and seventy-five off of postage, copying costs, and I'm sure you guys remember, when we figure the budget, we always look at how much we spent through the June of that year, and then I divide that up and times that by twelve, and that's, that's what we usually put down in there. So, equipment maintenance, again, everything's getting old, we're starting to spend more money on it. So, building maintenance and small tools stayed exactly where they were. The, the reduction in telephone is after Station One rebuild and, and addition, we reevaluated telephones, and we were getting charged for two or three telephones we didn't even have anymore, and I'm kind of disappointed, because when we brought it up, the company said, oh yeah, we know you didn't have them, but they were still charging us and let, never let us know, so. So we reworked some things there. Our water and light bill, we're projecting down for a couple reasons, we worked with water and light, thank you Jay Bemke, put me in touch with somebody there, we got on a different billing plan, and we are in the process of changing all the lights to LEDs, putting in sensors in the spots that aren't there, so that they can't be left on. I'm changing some light bulbs, our, some floodlights that take a lot of juice, and some timer switches on our fans, so they don't run twenty-four hours, so, in the Bay areas. Can see the heating's down, again, we realized with the new station how, how much less we're using, so. A bigger one there, subscriptions and memberships, this is the stuff that, for a lot of our training, now, because guys don't get all their training in, and we have standards we have to meet, SPS says how many hours of firefighter training? For our relicenter, they got so many hours of, of EMS training, we've taken on a couple of online platforms that can be done at any time, so that if they get called out to a call in the middle of training, they can pause it, come back and, and pick it back up. That's one of the big drivers, but that's also like our NFPA, where we have people that call and have questions about code enforcement, we can get that online and actually print it off and give them the code. So it's, it's things like that also for use throughout the fire department. Training and education pretty much stays the same. Fire department vehicles went up, that's driven primarily by the aging fleet. Just the ladder truck this year, after DOT inspection, is going to cost us somewhere around seventy-five thousand dollars, just to take care of the safety infractions or safety problems with it, so. Clothing, uniforms, and dry cleaning, again, contracted items, we really don't have control over that, it's part of CBA. The physicals, you can see, went down, we, we contracted with Med Compass last year, who reduced our, our cost for physicals by about, by about two-thirds. We were paying close to thirty thousand, now we're going to pay around ten to twelve, and they do just as good, if not better, a job for our hazmat physicals. Fire prevention, that's mainly just the rise in cost of materials, it also is, we had trialed a new software a year ago, and when I was the fire inspector, I was the only one doing inspections, we've now spread that out to the crews to help do inspections, that pays big benefits, because the crews get in, get to see the lay of land in, in all these businesses, so if we ever do have an incident there, they've been in there. They also get the experience of some one-on-one time with citizens also, so. In order to do that, we needed to be able to have three more licenses for them to be able to use that software as an inspection, so. Probably had to stay the same, and then the insurance, again, we don't have any control over, so. Total for the fire department, a seven point seven percent increase, but don't get wound up about that, because the overall is, is much less, so. The next page, forty-two, is EMS, again, the top is things that are out of our control, probably some of the highlights in here is ambulance supplies. Over the last year, we've changed some of our operational, usually, it used to be everybody got an IV, well, now everybody doesn't need an IV, and that IV tubing, I think we saved something like ten thousand dollars by starting just locks on patients that need to get just medicine, so. That, and Jason, Deputy Chief Joling, has been getting supplies out of Marshfield, it takes a day or two days a month that he's got to go up and pick them up, but much cheaper, we're also buying in bulk, when we know that something's going to go, become scarce on the market, we'll buy in bulk, get better pricing on it, or we know there's going to be a big price jump. We also have some, some buying partnerships, so, like through things like WEMSA and things like that, where we get reductions and, and better pricing, so. Jason's done a great job, and we think we can reduce the ambulance supplies by twenty thousand next year, so. The telephone, again, you'll see that that's strictly because we got rid of everything, and the same things there, you're going to see is, as you saw on the fire page, it's just split fifty-fifty, so. Any questions on that? You can see that on the EMS side, it's a negative six point eight percent, so we saved, or six point eight percent less than we were last year on that, as far as the budget. And then the next line is, that summary I told you, is the Fire and EMS together, you're going to see, again, at the end of the, that whole thing, with the two of them together, our total budget is three point three percent. When you consider wages went up three percent, and the, the increase of costs, three point three percent, I think is a, a pretty decent. Page forty-five begins outlay or, or, so EMS budget highlights, there's some, some, some descriptions on there, just what I've been saying here, like the fire vehicles, why that's that much, that's what I've been talking to, is seventy-five thousand for extra maintenance on the trucks and stuff, so. But at the bottom of forty-five is the outlay for the fire department. Station number one's apparatus, HVAC and exhaust, the exhaust system that's in there is, need a big repair, we've tried two years in a row to get an AFG grant, can't, haven't been successful with it. The HVAC, the fresh air makeup, doesn't even work in there anymore. This year, we had the HVAC system at Station Two in our outlay, which got accomplished, it did a couple of things, is not only is it getting working now, it doesn't run all the time, it's on a timer where it, it kicks on for twice an hour, or anytime it senses any CO in the building, it'll kick that on, and, and like the exhaust from a truck or whatever, it kicks on automatically and vacates the exhaust from the building, so. The battery operated floor cleaner, after the station remodel, we did everything we could to try to keep those floors clean, mopping, we tried different types of cleaners and stuff, and janitorial services down at West Grand let us borrow their cleaner, and it was a tremendous difference on what it does for the floors, so. In order to keep the investment that the citizens and you guys made in the station, we're, we'd like to get that battery operated floor cleaner, to be able to keep that floor in decent condition, so. Station number one and number two painting, this is some of the insides, we've had some, we had some water leaks that we fixed this year on Station Two with the blistering, we've got some painting that, in some of the Bay areas, it's a cheap investment, four thousand, to make it look like a professional building again, so. The exhaust capture system hose drops, that was the one I was talking about with this, with the AFG grant, we tried, the five thousand is only to fix the hose drops and, and repair it so that it's still operational, so. Station Two's security cameras, right now, it's the only twenty-four hour building that doesn't have any security cameras outside of it, when Station One was built, we had all the wiring done, and in this year's budget, we had the security cameras in there, we're just trying to get the security cameras in Station Two now. And then Station Two furniture and a refrigerator, the refrigerator is on the fritz, so we're looking to replace that, it's like twelve years old or something like that, and some, some furniture upgrade. When we did the Station One remodel, and we got furniture, new furniture in there, right now, what was that, what's that Station Two is cloth recliners, well, everybody knows what happens with that during like COVID and things, so. This is, this will be something that can be cleaned daily if need be wiped down, it's got a, a finish on it that, it's not cloth, so. So that total budget line for outlay is actually fourteen point seven percent less than what we were last year, so. You, you got questions on any of that, you want me to continue, and then to ask questions at the end, it's up to you, but. So our EMS replacement fund or outlay, these items are things that are on our, our, the mayor had asked last year, we have a five-year plan, we actually have a twenty-year plan, these are items that are on that five-year or twenty-year plan, so. We project out all the higher dollar ticket items, and they're on a plan that we pick these off, so. This is the year that we need to exchange out our IV pumps, so there's two of them that are eighty-one hundreds and two of the eighty-fifteens, you can see the cost there. We're trying to get a high fidelity training mannequin, we've noticed that some of our innovation rates have dropped, so through our QA and QI, we want to make sure that we bolster that up, so we, we're looking for a high fidelity mannequin that is more lifelike, so. And then the ambulance is in there, that's, that's in there every three years, we're buying an ambulance, Tim can talk better than that, but we keep money in there for that, the chassis is already paid for, we had to do that a year and a half ago, just to make sure that we could get delivery in two and a half years, with that chassis is already paid for through, and this would be the delivery or the, the rest of that body when it's done, so. And then the, um, budgeted funds that are in there is, is explained out there, so, but, again. Fire vehicles in, that's just a account that we put money in every year, that we can draw out, we have nothing in the budget for next year for that, but that's how we build funds into that account, so when it, when it comes time to build a engine, or buy an engine, or buy a ladder truck, or some other fire vehicle, we've got money allocated in there, and that's the lesson we gotta, we have to borrow when the time comes, so. But we have nothing allocated this year in that category. So fire equipment, every year, we've got SCBA maintenance, but this, but this coming next year is unique, is that all our tanks are going to have to get hydroed, and that's a higher cost, so every five years, all the tanks have to be hydrotested, just like oxygen tanks, just like any tank, so. That's why that's in here, is that's a once every five year cost. And then there's some new masks in, in there for our three new firefighters that we put on this year, we gave them our, our extra masks that we keep in the engines, in case something happens with a mask, so we're trying to backfill those three new masks that are in the engines that are now missing, so. The Fire Academy training, this, I got that in here, that's, that's the new, a new platform we want to try for our fire training, SPS, so Safety Professional Services out of Wisconsin, has identified numbers of how many hours each firefighter has to have every year, how many hours each motor pump operator has to have in training every year, how many hours each officer has to have in training every year, and a lot of times, if we're busy in days, they don't get their training in. This platform is going to be there, they can get on there at five o'clock at night, or go on a call, come back and pick up right where they left off. If we're going to trial it this year, that's why it's in here, if it, if it's successful, then I'll just try to get it in my budget for next year, and it won't be an outlay item, so. The flow meter that's on there, is in there, when we test hose, it has to flow so many gallons per minute, we don't, we don't know that right now, because we don't have a meter, but usually, when hose fails, you can reduce the flow of that, you know, in half, and we wouldn't even know that without a flow meter to tell. And that's how you test, make sure that your integrity of your, inside of your hose is not failing and starting to collapse, so we have to test hose every year, it's got to be documented, and this would, we'd be able to put that on, to be able to accurately tell that our flow through the hoses is not reduced. We have some special operations equipment, a lot of it has to replace things that have, are broken, or they're, they're old and need to be taken out of service. And then the, the big item on there is six Motorola radios, with our three new hires, we gave them our three spares, so this is, and if we get our SAFER grant, we're going to need three more radios, so it's six, three for the, the replace the spares, and three for possibility of, of three other firefighters, so. Again, if you look at the bottom, I believe we're forty thousand less than we were a year prior in our outlay items.
Chief, how do you currently test the flow, is that something they come and do every year, and you guys are kind of running blind all year without that item?
No, we, we've never really tested the pressure or the flow as far as gallons per minute, but through, through other, other fire departments that I know, people, and through research and data that, of, of trainings and stuff, you could, you could have that reduction in flow out of your hose, and not even know it, because you have no way to test it, and that, that hose will collapse, and that's one of the biggest causes of, of that reduction in flow, so. It's a safety item to make sure that when we're sending somebody in a fire, they've got accurate, or they've got good flow of the water, and it's a cheap price, it's nineteen bucks or whatever, so. Now we'll be able to test, when we test hose, we, every piece of hose we have, both supply and suppression hose gets tested, we have a tester, our guys do it, but this, now we're going to be able to put that on there and make sure that we got flow.
On scene, is that kind of?
No, this will be when we test our hose, so.
Thank you, and you had just mentioned the SAFER grant, so, in regards to the Motorola radios, provide an update on that?
We haven't gotten any notice yet, they're, they continue to give them out, I've heard rumors, but I haven't heard nothing, or no hardcore facts from like FEMA or anything, but until they tell us we don't have it, I'm still hopeful, so.
Chief, could you, I'm on page forty-two on the vehicles, looking at the history, if you can explain that a little, so we, twenty twenty was sixty thousand, twenty-one was seventy-five, twenty-two was down, actual was down to sixty-four.
You're on page forty-two, which, which line?
Fire department vehicles, so.
We must have different page numbers.
Historical information is.
Where are we here? Fire vehicles, okay.
Yep, so, you, actual in twenty twenty-two was sixty-four, you only budgeted fifty-four for this year, are you going to hit that, or?
We're, we're going to be over that, I.
So you're going to be over that?
We, we haven't even, we haven't even gotten the ladder truck over to get the, the items fixed on there, and that estimate is like fifty to seventy-five thousand.
Okay, so why, why did you only budget fifty-three on this one?
We didn't, I'm budgeting sixty-five on it, for twenty twenty-four.
No, I'm asking you why, I'm asking you why you budgeted, you went from sixty-three in twenty twenty-two, and then this year's budget, you budgeted fifty-three.
So again, again, when, when we look at these items, well, we didn't know that we were going to have that kind of failure coming up on the ladder truck, for one, last year when that was done, but when you look at these items, you look at what you spent through June, divided by six, and then times that, times twelve for your projection for twenty twenty-four, unless you know something big is coming up. We didn't know that that large item for the ladder truck was, so last year, when we looked at it, when I did that calculation, it came out to that fifty-three or fifty-four or whatever, so. That's why that number is in.
So where do you think you're going to come in on that number, then?
I think we're going to be way over that. Like I said, we haven't even taken the ladder truck over there, and he's, he's telling me it could be anywhere from fifty to seventy-five, the reason it hasn't been done yet is, they can't get parts for it, because it's so old, and some of them, they have to fabricate, so.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Ladder truck is thirty years old this year, it'll be thirty-one next year. And just FYI, we had that discussion earlier this year, Tim and I have been, we're going to have a meeting, we're getting some quotes in on, on what a ladder truck's going to cost, and then options for payment and stuff, so Tim and I have that on, on the list, we got one more, one more dealer coming in to, to show us what they have, we've already looked at two different ones, so that we got an idea cost, and then what's it going to take as far as payments, does it have, does it have to be made upfront, does it have to be made, I'm sorry, at the end, or, or what are the options? So that's when Tim and I will meet, like, like Tim suggested, when we talked about that earlier this year, so.
Thank you.
Or do you have anything else to go through, or is this the end?
I don't, that's it.
Okay. The only thing I really have, and let me get back up to it, so I'm quoting accurate numbers.
I guess the only thing I'll say is that, again, that the total budget's three point three percent higher, and with a three percent increase in wages, which is the driving factor, and then the cost of increase on what we deal with and we purchase, or whatever, I feel like that is a good budget.
Yeah, just trying to, give me one second, I'm trying to get back to wherever. All right, so I'm on page forty-five, I think me and you have the same packet, but there's pages mixed up, I don't know.
My forty-five has got the fire department outlay at the bottom.
I'm looking at total Fire EMS.
Yep, that's the line, that's forty-four for me, but.
Okay, yeah, I'll try to get on the same page as, as everybody else here. I know why, but I'm just giving you the opportunity during your budget time here to speak to the, where we were at, four, four point three million in twenty twenty, and now we're at almost five point three. I, I've been along for the ride, so I know how we got there, but the increase in wages, the additional personnel, if you could just talk to, if someone were to look at this budget that didn't know anything, how we got from four point three to, or four point three-five to five point three?
Sure, well, since twenty twenty, we've, we've added the eleventh person that was missing onto our staff, and then last year, the three that were placed on, so that's four firefighters, and Tim, correct me if I wrong, but you can, a rough estimate is a hundred thousand of, of a spot, right? So there's four hundred thousand of that. Every year, prices go up, there's different things that, you know, need to be purchased, or we do purchase, so, I mean, it's just a, it's an ever-increasing budget, I guess, I, I. Maintenance, our fleet is getting older, our, our station, not so much Station One anymore, but there's, there's, Station Two is getting really old. It's sixty-nine that was built, so do the math, fifty-four years old, right, so we're spending more money in that. In the last three years, we've, we've taken the opportunity to try to do some upkeep and bring the buildings up to a standard, that's why, like, last year, we tried, we were doing the HVAC system that wasn't operating in the, in Station Two, we're going to try to do that this year with Station One, you guys made a great investment, I think, in Station One, and we need to, the things that didn't get fixed, we need to make sure are operational, so that's there forty years from now. Ambulances, obviously, I mean, we've purchased ambulances through the year, ambulance supplies have gone up, you know, constantly every year, ambulance supplies go up, a good example is, you know, a case of gloves, you know, pre-COVID was like twenty-seven dollars, a case of gloves now post-COVID is something like eighty-four dollars. That's just an example, drugs, on another hand, you guys, I'm sure, hear of the, the Narcan, that's a, that was a big driver over the last two or three years.
Do you have an amount for that?
I don't have that in front of me.
If, if you could just email me an amount of what we used in previous years versus where we're at, I, I just find that information relevant to the community and this growing crisis that's on our hands, that you guys have no control over, obviously, but, I mean, this is how much it's costing the city from year to year to year, and it's going up.
So I mean, every, every one of these line items can be, you can, you know, put a, a mark on from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-three, and the increase, that's just the cost of, of the rise and everything that's, that's out there, so. You know, and just in the last three years, three percent, two point five, and two point seven percent, just on wages, so that's just normal, you know, increases of, of wages, which wages are the biggest factor, I think, in anybody's budget, so especially, you know, fire and, and streets and that have a lot of employees, so. It's, it's not hard to, to change from one, from five point three to six point three, or four point three to five point three, so.
Tim?
Yeah, just, you know, when you look at the increase, you know, from, you know, four million, three hundred fifty-four thousand, and, you know, to five point two, two million, that's nine hundred and thirty-seven, eight hundred and twenty-five thousand of that is attributed to increase in wage and benefits, and that is, you know, obviously, the four additional personnel, but plus contractual increases and wage adjustments and benefits.
Thank you, and that, that's all I wanted, was to see, to speak to this document, as if, you know, someone didn't have that information, how we got from four point three to, oh, five point three. Do you have a, any projection on, I know you have no control over the things you have to purchase that go up in cost or whatever, but any projection to what this might look like over the coming years, is it going to go from five point three to blank, I mean, we can expect a, a three percent, or somewhere around there for wage increases, but. Total, like, fire department, you asked, like, we're talking, do you have any projection or a range?
I, I don't think that's going to be driven, just like Tim explained here, that's going to be driven by, you know, wage increases. If we get our SAFER grant, the next three years are, we don't pay anything to that, as far as employees. If we, if anything would happen with the SAFER grant, you know, I mean, there's other options for employees, I guess, but that would be the only thing I would say is any increase in, in wages, if you even listen, or even take what Tim just said. So in, in that timeframe from five point three to six point three, it's a hundred thousand or less was really an increase in anything that wasn't wage-driven. I, I would say that that's probably going to be about the same going forward, other than, we can't wait long on a ladder truck, I can tell you that, I mean, in, in the next three years, while we wait for that ladder truck, because the fastest track for a ladder truck is thirty to thirty-six months, that's seventy-five, seventy thousand this year, it's probably going to be more in the next three years, you could, you could have, you know, a quarter of it. Our, a good option, I think, for it is, we can write an AFG grant for it, and we would, would think we'd be a good candidate, considering our ladder's thirty years old, and they usually look at age, we can only get eight hundred thousand on an AFG grant, but that would be about half of a ladder, a ladder is about one point eight, one point six, one point eight, so it would be an option to get half of it paid through an AFG grant.
Are you guys applying for that, or is that something you're going to apply for?
That was, that was on my, my forecast for next year is the, I obviously got to come in front of finance or whatever and ask to be able to, to put that. and ask to be able to, to put that application in, but especially that one, because it's not for the whole thing. So, but it would be, I think, a good use of an AFG grant if we got it to be able to pay half of that.
Yeah, definitely. In the options coming forward in future years, like the, the ladder truck, the options for that, is it always a new ladder truck or is there an option to purchase one that's less old than ours that perhaps is on the market? I'm not familiar with that process at all.
Fire departments get rid of ladder trucks because they're old or they're a piece of junk? Or you'd just be buying somebody else's headache? And the other thing is, look at the investment in that ladder truck, that was bought brand new and thirty years later, we still have it. It, it's just now that it's starting to fail because of age, you know? We've, we've historically taken very good care of our apparatus and I think it's, it's kinda like the investment you made in, in the building. I think it's a great investment to make in a new ladder instead of something else, so.
Okay, thanks, move on to the police and fire then.
I'm, if you really have nothing for me, I'm gonna bug because I got another meeting at six-thirty up by Marshville, so.
Thank you, thanks, chief.
Ready?
Yep, sorry.
No, I was just making sure that I wasn't talking over anybody. We start off with the wages and benefits here, uh, you can see where that's gone up seven point three percent. Obviously, a portion of that is the cost of living adjustment contractual. And then the addition of the code enforcement position as well as the administrative lieutenant position would be where that comes from. Uh, increased postage, just based on the, uh, the increase from the post office for twenty-twenty-three, so it's only a hundred twenty-five dollars difference. We had, we had a hallway with the pictures of all the police department, all the officers and the civilian staff on the police department. All those pictures are, you know, probably a decade or more old, so I'd like to get those replaced. So, and in doing so, we've gotta hire someone to, to take all those pictures and, uh, get new frames and things like that. So that's where that increase came from. The range supplies is only, the only reason that that's increased is because the cost of the supplies has, have increased over the last year. I can go through that item by item here in just a minute. I just wanna make sure that nothing's stand, standing out in this list here before I get into that. See that I did add to the budget an education reimbursement for non-union employees. And in that, uh, that's to cover costs associated with lieutenants and above. We have a requirement that they have a bachelor's degree in law enforcement or related field. Uh, current costs are between sixteen hundred and two thousand dollars per course. I'd like to see where we're at once we get everybody into that, uh, meeting that requirement and then we can probably reduce that in the future. But right now, if we had three individuals that took one class per term next year, that would, uh, use that entire line item up. So I, you know, I don't think that's a, an unreasonable request for. Yeah, so if, if I had three individuals who took one class per term, whether, you know, spring, summer and then fall semesters, that, that would take pretty much that entire budget, uh, that entire fifteen thousand, so.
I guess my question would be, is that gonna be enough to get them to where they need to be with, in getting a bachelor's? Like, say you're sitting at an associate's right now, one class per term, or are they gonna be going in their own pocket?
Well, um, right now I have one, uh, one lieutenant who is actively going to school. I need to make promotions to two, for two more lieutenants. And then I have perspect, uh, prospective lieutenants who are sergeants now, um, who only have associate's degrees. So, uh, considering everything that I have right now, I think fifteen thousand is, is probably adequate because I've only got the one, the, the one lieutenant, but I, I do need to make two, two promotions. And several of the sergeants that we have right now are, um, only have associate's degrees and are working, working towards their, their bachelor's degrees. So, you know, if, if they go right now or in the spring, since the, the budget for the union employees has been used up, then, um, they can take that initial out of the contractual, um, education reimbursement fund. And then hopefully when I can get those promotions done, probably beginning of next fall, then they may end up taking, we might have two individuals at that point taking classes in the fall. So I think fifteen thousand dollars is probably adequate for this year. And then I just have to evaluate that come, you know, come this fall and see where we're at. And I may be able to reduce that down for the, for the next year. I don't see us needing more than the fifteen thousand for this year.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we weren't bottlenecking anyone who wanted to go to school more, didn't have the money in, in their personal finances and we would use up, you know, the entire fund there. I, I wanna make sure that you're able to get these people where they need to be education-wise as soon as possible and just making sure this is enough. We had had this conversation, I think, in human resources before you got here and, uh, it was around whether there's just enough funding for these guys to go back to school that want to.
Yeah, I think it's more of an issue for, uh, represented employees, honestly, than it is for, uh, my command staff. There, there, like I said, there are some, some sergeants that are going to be, uh, looking to move into lieutenant positions that don't have that requirement and that, that's where we would probably need to focus when that time comes. But I did do the math for this year and I feel, um, that the fifteen thousand will probably be just the right amount.
Okay, thank you.
I am, I believe that ten thousand's contractual, so.
Correct, and that's why it.
Yep, yep, and so next year negotiations, so, but I think it's, as you pointed out, it's important that we have the fifteen thousand established for the, the non-represented employees, because we've never had that. And, and I think it's important that, that at least fifteen in there. But the other, other part, can negotiate that next year if that's something they feel important. But, but for the non-union, I think now you have funds available to get those educational credits.
That's correct. And, and the, uh, as you see, the represented employee, uh, education reimbursement has stayed the same because that is contractual. Department vehicles, that we, uh, we purchase three vehicles a year. The cost of those has gone up, it's around forty-five thousand dollars per vehicle to replace that.
So is that, that's just for the vehicles, that's not for the?
Right.
Lights, the radios and everything else?
Yeah, there's a separate, I, uh, there's a separate line for, uh, to outfit the squads and.
You'll get to it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, let's see where we're at. The, the clothing allowance, again, um, you know, the cost of these things has increased, so, uh, so that's gone up there. Uniforms, I've increased that because we're hiring, um, we need to hire five individuals. We've got two individuals right now that are in the tail end of the process of being hired. So, so they should be hired in the next month. And then we have three more, um, that we're hiring that to go to, uh, training in January. The basic law enforcement training in January. And the costs of, you know, purchasing uniforms to outfit all of those individuals is, it's pretty expensive. When you talk about, uh, three short-sleeved shirts, three long-sleeved shirts, three shirts of pants, coats, ballistic vests that are about a thousand dollars, um, and all, when, you know, all told. And, you know, whatever other safety equipment they need, so. And I, hopefully, uh, once we get fully staffed, that's another thing that I can look at again next year and maybe drop that back down to the, the previous amount. But I, I just know that, um, with the current staffing needs and the upfront costs that we're gonna have associated with hiring people, it's gonna be a little bit more than, than what we would normally incur. Uh, city hall rent, that's nothing I can do about that. Uh, maintenance, uh, software agreement, um, that has gone down. But, uh, I'll talk about that when we get to the, the, uh, the body cameras, because that was, part of that was, uh, the associated storage fees for the, um, for the camera systems. And we're replacing that with new, uh, body cameras, so.
Chief, if I may, back to rent, why is there such, such a fluctuation with that?
So that is not, not, not my, my, my answer, so.
We have a budget, we're, an internal service budget, basically, where we account for all the expenses related to city hall. And then those expenses are then allocated out based on square footage to the departments that operate within city hall. And that increase just reflects, uh, the amount of the increased expense of city hall with utilities, building maintenance and things. Also, we include in there, um, approximately like ten thousand dollars a year for any city hall improvements. And in fact, uh, next year, um, they plan to replace the, the chiller. Chiller needs replacement, a, a cost of around eighty thousand dollars, but that account has sufficient funds to, to cover that expense, so we don't have to budget outright. So that's why we do that ten thousand dollars each year in that allocation.
Thank you. So the physicals, uh, that was reduced. If you look, that sixty-five hundred had been budgeted for, for the, the last several years and it had actually never been used. So the physicals are, are actually out of the HR budget and not out of the police department budget, so that we could eliminate that line altogether, because we've never spent them, or, at least in the last several years, that, that money has not been spent for that particular, um, use. So, um, everything else, uh, SRT, uh, that's down, but I'll, I can, I can get into the, more of the particulars here in a minute on that. Auto insurance, that's a normal increase there. K and M programs, the same, so. Alright, so going to the wages and benefits, like we've talked, uh, this is for non, uh, the non-union wages are budgeted, um, at the, the next year's rate. And then the, uh, union wages are also, uh, on the contractual twenty-twenty-three in, uh, rate increase. And then the addition of the administrative lieutenant and the ordinance officer accounts for the entire budget for, for the wages. The overtime budget of the two hundred thousand, that, uh, broken down on page seventy-five. Hopefully, everybody has the same page numbers that I do. But call, call-ins, this is a contractual thing, you get two hours of straight time paid when an officer is required to return to duty at some time other than regular scheduled starting time unless the duty is, is, uh, scheduled prior to departure. So to account for that, uh, happening throughout the year, uh, chapter fifty-one related. So if we, if we have to, uh, do an emergency, emergency detention for someone, we have to transport those individuals to healthcare facility and then sit with them while they're in a healthcare facility. And then when they're cleared medically, then we have to transport them to a secure, uh, facility. That all takes a considerable amount of time. And, um, there are times when we are already at, um, minimum staffing and need to get somebody else to come back in and cover the street while that individual is, is tied up with, uh, with the chapter fifty-one detention. So that's to cover that. Community involvement, neighborhood watch, et cetera, um, presentations, things like that. We do a lot of community outreach things. I think it's important that the police department has a, uh, a relationship with the community outside of just taking calls. I like to, uh, you know, attend some of the events downtown here. They'll have the, uh, farmer's market, get people out on bike patrol and going through there and, and interacting with people. We also have, uh, I don't know if the, all the special events is down there, but we also do, um, the, uh, citizens academy as well. Let's see, if I got that listed on here somewhere else, just make sure that I don't. Which is, uh, which has been a pretty popular, and in fact, it's going on right now. But it's, it's a pretty popular thing to get, get people in and give them an idea, a taste of what it's like to be a police officer. And we also, starting this year, we started taking those individuals over to the fire department and spending a few hours over there and learning what the fire department does, uh, in addition to, uh, you know, what they do on the police department side. And they got to go out yesterday and, uh, drive squad cars out at mid-state so that, you know, kinda do the, an abridged version of the emergency vehicle operations and, uh, things like that. So it's a, I think it's an important thing that we do, uh, and just a, an example of community things that we do. Court time, trial time, those things, those are contractual. So if somebody gets called back, called into court, they get four hours straight time or two point six, seven hours, uh, at time and a half. Emergency call-ins related to emergency situations where we need additional staffing immediately. FMLA, it's a substituting for someone that's off for family medical leave. And, uh, you know, we have people who are expanding their families currently. We got, uh, people whose wives are pregnant and things like that and they're gonna be probably off for maybe extended period of time for those things. Surgeries, things like that. Investigations, uh, certain offenses where officers with specialized training are needed, sexual assaults, arson, homicides, things like that, where we have to call in an investigator to, uh, process scenes and take over investigations. Late calls where people are held over after the shift, uh, to complete investigations and reports, things like that. Covering sick time, you know, right now, because we're short-staffed, we're in a situation where anytime someone's off for any reason, whether it's training, vacation, uh, personal time or sick time, we're typically paying overtime. Right now, we have a lieutenant that's, uh, that's off, um, for, uh, personal reasons and we've gotta cover those shifts. So, uh, unfortunately, until we get back to being full staff, I don't see where we're gonna be able to do a lot to reduce, uh, the overtime. Um, so vacation, same thing, special events, uh, Fourth of July, water ski weekend. And, you know, you may, uh, you may say, well, why don't we do a lot of these things? The five K runs, the Fourth of July events like that with individuals that are on duty. Well, the problem is, is because we're short-staffed, typically, uh, the shifts are. Well, the problem is is because we're short-staffed, typically uh the shifts are, you know, at a minimum minimum staffing levels and those individuals, we need to be out taking calls. And we don't have the luxury of being able to use utilize those individuals um in a a the capacity for a special event. Uh, you know, case in point, we had a a situation where um there was, I don't know if it was a church or whatever it was that did the electronics drop off here back in the summer, do you remember that? Yeah, did anybody recall when that when that happened? Well, that caused a huge uh traffic backup, traffic problem. So now we have to take our officers off the street to direct traffic. Um, we even had a county deputy directing traffic in town uh because we just didn't have enough people to cover to cover that, you know, kind of un- unanticipated event. So, uh, and we're luck luckily uh for that day, and and that wasn't the only thing we had going on that day, but I don't recall what else we had going on that day. But um luckily, we didn't have to call people back just to to cover that, so. Does anybody have any questions about so far?
Tim, what was previously budgeted for the ordinance officer?
You mean the whole, the entire budget?
Yes.
Let me just. I do believe it's around ninety-nine thousand, but is that what it is?
Yeah.
Okay, I got it off the top of my head. Your honor.
Yeah, so it there are some items that the chief and I talked about in here that, you know, because it is a large amount of overtime. But like he given, he said with staffing and and that shortage, it's going to need to uh they have to, they have to fill those slots and it's only going to take overtime. But I guess more of a general thing to bring you up to speed. And I've talked to the chief, both chiefs and uh Paul at the street department. I'm uh putting together an email, I'm going to request that um they outline uh what their policy is for overtime and also what is, what's the procedure for filling overtime? So at least there's some scrutiny to that filling of that overtime. And then also I'm going to issue a directive and hopefully po- um council adopt the policy. But most of the time, we don't consider a budget over budget and based on the total budget. So what what my expectation is going to be is that whatever overtime's approved, that's your overtime allotment. And should you become, should you bump up to that, you're going to have to come to council and explain why you need to get more overtime into that budget. And also I'm going to request in their monthly reports, they always do a monthly report, to kind of keep ha- have an explanation as to what is the overtime they spent that month and what's kind of driving that overtime? So we can kind of figure out what's going on with overtime and the whole accountability. So I just want to let you know that's going on behind the scenes regarding overtime. But like the chief brought up, you know, between, well, both chiefs brought up that, you know, their staffing levels have driven the overtime lately, a lot more. But I still think that, you know, Tim and I have talked many times over the year, over the last four years about, you know, how can we kind of get some handle on the overtime and have department heads take accountability for that overtime to scrutinize how that overtime is being utilized and making sure that it's just not whimsical? And so that's going on behind the scenes, just to let you know.
Patrick.
I just have a question about the emergency room visits. Do you um do your employees spend a lot of time in the emergency room? We have a uh, I know that we do for our business and the uh emergency room here apparently doesn't know the meaning of emergency.
Yeah.
So um I was wondering if there is other options other than just going down to this emergency room that you've explored? If any of the hospitals keep track of waiting times and stuff like that?
Right, I don't know about about their keeping track of any of that stuff, but we do spend an inordinate amount of time there. And, you know, there are times where uh we feel like we could uh drop in, like especially with individuals who are voluntarily, you know, taking some sort of a commitment. Um, we will take them to the emergency room because they have to be medically cleared before they can go to one of these uh facilities. And um we would attempt to drop them off and say, hey, call us and we'll come back and get them and then take them to the the facility and the emergency room would uh request that we stay. Whether we feel like we need to stay or not. They have a, and then what's what they tell us is it's their policy that uh that the officer remain whether the uh whether the individual is a danger or not. So, so yeah, we do spend an inordinate amount of time there. Now, um, we are in some early stages of discussions uh with the sheriff's department and ODC regarding a co-responder program where, and I'll just give you a brief overview of that right now uh because we are in the early stages of that and it's going to be something that we will be presenting to you down the road here when we get a little closer to that. But um what that kind of a brief overview is uh we would have an individual that is employed by by ODC and um they would respond to uh complaints with us for, you know, if it's drug or alcohol-related situations, uh mental health situations, um death-suicide type situations, things like that. And then we could uh, obviously if it's safe to do so, uh leave that individual to ref- make referrals. And um we can also provide them, like if if it to start off with, it will just be one individual and that'll be, they'll be a full-time employee um of ODC. And and when that individual's not working, then we will refer reports to that individual to go back and follow up with with people. Um, the police department is very limited on on how we can respond to to situations. You know, we can do the commitments, whether they're voluntary or involuntary. Um, we can do, you know, limited referrals to uh to certain programs. But then it's upon, it's on the individual to actually take that time and reach out. And uh oftentimes, they don't. Uh, whereas when we bring the uh the co-responder, the individual in, um, that they can not only refer that person to the help that they may need, but they can also bring them together as opposed to just doing the referral. But, you know, reach out not only to the individual, but to the the service provider as well and kind of bring those those individuals together. And then follow up with the individual to make sure that those uh their needs are being met and that the referral that we've given them, the services that we've that they provided them are the appropriate ones. And if not, figure out what uh, you know, an alternative is. And again, I I don't want to get too far in the weeds on that, but uh it's something that uh that I developed in my previous job and it was success, pretty successful. And uh I've been lucky enough to be working to try to get something like that going here as well, so. Hmm, where did I leave off here? Okay, training and education. Um. Uh, that did increase by about five hundred dollars, but the, you know, the cost of the training and um we have mandated training that officers have to do continuing continually throughout uh throughout the year. Uh, we have recertifications, we have, we also have individual officers who are instructors in um in certain things that we train in, uh whether it's taser, firearms, um, excuse me, and things like that, so that that actually reduces the costs of overall of our training um by being able to do those things in-house. Also, the uh, when you get down to the executive development institu- institute, uh, we are really making a push to get all of our command staff a an appropriate level of training. You know, if a individual is promoted to sergeant, then they should have a minimum of a first-line supervisor training uh to be a sergeant. As a lieutenant, you know, you should have a a minimum of a mid-level, you know, mid-management uh equivalent training to be in that position and so on, you know, the executive level at the at the deputy chief and and chief level. Um, it just, you know, it just makes sense. And, you know, we talk about succession planning and things like that, and these individuals having that training uh really puts them in a position to uh to move up within the organization when those uh when those openings come come available. So I'm, I don't, I'm not going to go through the entire list here, but if you have any questions about that, I'd be happy to uh to answer specifically.
In Wisconsin Rapids, we have a population that's getting elderly and they're growing old. Um, and diseases like Alzheimer's and uh stuff like that are obviously increasing with the population. I was wondering if you had any training for um responses to those situations? And I do know that your last answer actually would would also go along with this, correct?
Yes, that's absolutely correct. Um, so we have a great, almost, almost all of our police officers are crisis intervention team training, trained, okay? And uh that encompasses a lot of those things and including uh, you know, dealing with elderly and um other individuals that, you know, may need special care. Um, and then when uh specific training like that comes up, uh then we try to, we try to get our officers to go to those things when when those things are available. Um, but the, you know, the co-responder would be a full, a a big uh help in in dealing with those types of things. Uh, in addition to that, um, you know, the county is the operation lightsaber, I don't know if you're familiar with that, where they have the uh the bands and uh then we respond to those things, you know, quite often as well. So I hope that answered your question?
I'm speaking more of where somebody has, and you're right, this new program that you are putting together would greatly help with that, but I think that a general education on um somebody with dementia because if they see a police officer, they can't comprehend exactly what's going on all the time. And I would think it would be good to have the uniform officers understand, uh, a lot of times they get violent and it's not their fault. I mean, they're not, so the appropriate responses from police for that.
Right, so that's, that is uh covered in crisis intervention training. Uh, but there, and there are also specific trainings out there that relate to dealing with elderly and and individuals with dementia and Alzheimer's. And when that train, those trainings become available, um, then we we definitely try to get our officers into that, into those trainings, so. Um, maintenance and uh software, uh annual payments for uh physical extraction subscription and annual software for our evidence and evidence room and um things like that. Uh, let's see. So we currently use Lexipol uh for our department policies, uh our training bulletins and, you know, constitutional uh law, court decisions, things like that. Uh, we, it's. I'm on the fence about it, to be honest with you. Uh, it's it's not, it's not a cheap uh contract to to have. And when I came into my position uh as as a police chief here, um, I found that our our policies need a lot of work. And so even though we have a company that um keeps our policies relatively up to date when it comes to and monitor those things so that when uh case law comes down, uh changes in statutes, things like that, then they, we get a notice that, hey, our policy needs to be updated to reflect, you know, new legislation or new case law thing, uh, you know, things of that nature. But um it's still something that needs to be uh reviewed and monitored on a regular basis. And, you know, we're, we are working on that now. The administrative lieutenant position is is going to be uh doing a lot with that. Um, and then eventually what I would like to do is get our policies um posted online so that anyone with, who is curious about the policies of the Wisconsin Rapids Police Department can go to the city's website, go to the depart, the police department's website, and they can see any of our policies. But we're not there yet, we're not, we're not in a position where um where I feel comfortable in in doing that. And we're spending a lot of money to maintain these policies. And um, you know, we have policies, I'll read through policies and we'll find where a policy refers to another policy and then I can't find that policy. So then I reach, then I reach out to uh Lieutenant Burris, who's in the administrative lieutenant position right now and and say, hey, where's this policy? And then he'll go in and he'll find it in draft form uh in in Lexipol. So um I'm going to evaluate the this system over the next, probably the next year and kind of make a decision um maybe next summer, uh early next fall, uh whether or not we want to stick with with that particular uh system. Now, it may be a situation where um once we have an individual uh review all of our policies and get them up to up to date and get them where they need to be and then post them online and we can maintain that, then then maybe it'll be, it will be a good idea to to keep that service. Uh, but uh that's just going to have to be determined when when I get to that point and get to where I'm comfortable with uh how our policies are written and um and maintained, so.
How much does Lexipol cost?
I think it's like sixteen thousand a year, something like that. Eleven? Oh, I'm sorry.
Potential savings there.
I'm sorry, it's eleven thousand.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so the, yeah, I'm not, it it's not, uh, again, it's not inexpensive. And uh there are alternatives out there. And if if in this, in this time that I have to get them all up to date and evaluate them, if at the, if if during that time, we determine that, yes, once, once they're where they need to be, uh, then it's, then the service is worth the cost, uh then we will talk about whether or not we're going to keep it. Um, but if it comes to that point and this just keep continues to be a cumbersome uh problem with the policies, then uh I'm going to look for alternatives. And I know there are alternatives out there that uh aren't as expensive as Lexipol. So I just wanted you to know that uh it's not, these things in the budget, I'm I'm always uh looking at and and making sure that we're getting our money's worth out of it, so.
Well, I got you on the mi- mic here. Uh, this is coming right up and you can speak to it when you get to it or you can speak to it now. You described Callio mobile technology that allows officers and negotiators to pro- monitor programmed phones. I don't know what that means, during negotiations undercover remotely.
Yeah, so um we have uh, we have phones that we can, you know, if we're in a situation where we have a standoff with someone or something like that, we can, we can use a uh a robot or something. We have a a little, looks like a little dune buggy that is equipped with uh cameras and remote uh that we can send in with a with a drop phone. And even if the individual doesn't uh pick up the phone to talk to us, uh, we can still monitor, you know, the things that are going on uh within uh that area uh au- the audible uh audio, that we can monitor that with that. monitor that with that. I'm not too much more familiar with it than that, other than using it for that type of setup. We have, I think we have one or two phones that we use for that particular scenario.
And I guess one or two phones, I'm not going to stick on this one topic. They cost five thousand dollars for two phones? Does it, does that include the little dune buggy or?
No, no, that's, that's a separate thing. No, it's just, it's for that communicate, or, one, it's for communication and it's closed communication. So it's not like the individual could pick up his phone and call his mom, you know? It's just cellular-based communication exclusive between, two-way communication between a negotiator and who we may be negotiating with. And then, like I said, even if the individual refuses to take, you know, pick up the phone and talk to us, we can still monitor the audio.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I just didn't understand what that was.
Okay. So, again, community policing efforts, neighborhood watch, bike patrol, citizens, the citizens' police academy, the student police academy. We just had the students in here today, or was that yesterday, I think it was, for all morning and giving them overviews of the department and gave them a demonstration of the K-9 program and our SRT. And I think those things are important, to have those types of interactions with the kids other than just responding to calls, so. I could break down the rain supplies, the operating expenses, also that includes the, there's an LP tank out there that we have to get filled, targets, ammunition, plow in the snow out there. We use the range year-round, so there's not a month that goes by that we're not out there utilizing the range. So those are the...
The county shares some of those expenses?
The county does share some of those expenses as well, but this is our portion of those expenses. SRT, and we talked about the Colio. Our vests are expiring, so we are, every year we're trying to replace them by replacing three at a time. We were able to, this year, replace a few of those vests with a grant, so that did save us some money this year, but we don't have anything, you know, in the pipeline for next year for that. But obviously, if anything comes up, we're definitely going to apply for the grant and try to offset some of those costs. We currently, and it's not listed right here, but we just applied for forty-nine thousand dollar grant through the firehouse subs to replace portable radios. We're, again, trying to update those, get them capable of interoperability between us and other agencies and put on digital frequencies instead of the analog frequencies or in addition to the analog frequencies. And, you know, they just, over time, they wear out and battery life suffers and new technology comes along and you get better reception. And, again, you can program with the digital channels, which gives us a lot better reception, like inside buildings, things like that, you know? If an officer goes to a school or a hospital or something of that nature and they're on a, with an older portable radio that doesn't have those capabilities, then they really lose the ability to communicate with other officers and with dispatch. So we have just recently applied for that grant, so I don't know whether or not we're going to get it, but I think we're trying to get like nine, don't quote me on that, but like nine portable radios with that, which would be a huge savings for us in the future as far as replacing those radios. Again, a lot of these things are, they're expiring and need to be replaced. And as you see, our previous ballistic plates were, I believe they were at maybe a five or a ten-year replacement and then the new ones that we found are a fifteen-year replacement, so, and they're lighter, so we should get a lot, get longer life out of them and not have to replace them as soon as in the past with those. SRT operating budget for general SRT equipment, that includes, you know, training-type smoke grenades, flashbangs, things like that, that they would use to prepare for incidents where they would need to use the real thing, so. The outlay here, these are new. We are looking to get five Flock cameras. Now, Flock is the manufacturer of these cameras and they started out with, in private sector and retail establishments and, you know, private security-type things, and they've expanded into law enforcement. And it's really become kind of a pretty big deal for law enforcement to have their automated license plate recognition cameras. And what we would do is place them in locations where, like coming into and going out of town, you know, maybe down the road, have them at entrance to Walmart or other places like that where they have increased amounts of retail theft and things like that. And what these do is they don't, they don't store any personal information, they store images. And in doing so, say, well, I'll give you an example. We do have agencies that are surrounding agencies that already have Flock cameras systems. And we had a situation this year where there was an individual who was reporting to be an FBI agent and walking around with a ballistic vest that said FBI on it and was making threats to law enforcement and to judges and things like that. And we got a description of his vehicle and placed it into Flock and we got a warrant for, we had a warrant for his arrest, we got a description of his vehicle. We had a neighboring agency type it into their, the description into their Flock system and within a couple of hours, the individual was located and arrested and taken off the street and was no longer a danger to the community. So there are other similar situations, but, yeah, so, yeah, that's a good one. There was a bank robbery that occurred and I can't, it was down south somewhere, I can't remember exactly the location, but they got away with nearly half a million dollars in this bank robbery and they fled the scene in a silver BMW and they had taken the license plates off of this vehicle. Well, you can search silver BMW sedan, whatever, and you can also put in, you know, if there's some damage on the vehicle, you can identify the dent in the front right fender or a bumper sticker or, you know, a window broken out or whatever, you know, anything that would be distinctly identify that vehicle. Well, they put the information into their system and it goes back thirty days, all the information is deleted after thirty days. But it goes back thirty days and sure enough, three days prior to that, they had a similar vehicle driving around casing the bank with their license plate still on the vehicle. And they were able to get the license plate off the vehicle, identify the individuals involved and make arrests for the bank robbery using the Flock camera system. It's also good for, you know, amber alerts and silver alerts and, you know, things like that. And when that information is entered in there, we would get an alert if something like that is located and, you know, then we can respond and make a stop.
How, once you're part of the system, you're connected to all the cameras? If you want to explain that?
Yeah, so, you know, there are literally thousands of Flock cameras in, you know, well, in the United States. And we really have, once you're part of the system, you have access to all of these cameras within the system. So, you know, we invest in five cameras, but we have access to, you know, thousands of cameras in doing so. So it's really a benefit. And, you know, say we're looking for a homicide suspect that, you know, that left here and maybe drove to Milwaukee. During that trip to Milwaukee, we can, you know, as that individual's passing these Flock cameras, we can put together a timeline of, you know, where this individual was. And then eventually if we, you know, if we get a warrant for that individual, then they can be picked up in that other jurisdiction. But it also works for that investigation to say, you know, if the individual says, no, I've been in Milwaukee for the last three days, I wasn't even in Wisconsin Rapids, we can say, yes, you were because you passed, not only did you pass our Flock camera on your way out of town at, you know, in close proximity to the timeframe of this incident, you also passed, you know, several Flock cameras on your way to Milwaukee and we can trace you through those all the way to Milwaukee and then locating that individual there. So just, you know, that's hypothetical, but...
Jake? Thanks. Flock cameras are very interesting. Would we need to develop a policy regarding these or does one exist?
Yes.
I guess with the concern with you telling us all the great things about it, which are awesome, is the possible abuse of the surveillance with it. So, like internally, or you never know who's tracking who or what goes on.
Right, privacy concerns, yeah, so there's no personal information that is maintained on this, but yes, you definitely want to get out to the public what they are and what they're not and have a policy regarding their use and their sample policies out there. You know, right now, we're, you know, in the early stages and it wouldn't be something that we would even be putting up until, obviously, after the start of the year. And at that point, I've already gathered a few policies from other Wisconsin law enforcement agencies on the use of the Flock cameras. In addition to that, there is one agency, and I don't remember off the top of my head, that in Wisconsin that actually has a, on their website, an explanation of what the Flock cameras are and what they're not and how the information is used and what's stored and what's not and things like that. So yes, I intend to do just that, the exact same thing is, you know, have something posted on our website as well as a policy in place that, once I'm able to get those posted as well, that any individual can go and search the Wisconsin Rapids Police Department and find out what our policy is on that and not have to request it. They can all go online and get it.
Excellent. Yeah, that was the first thing that came to mind is what's the policy regarding this?
Of course.
Is it subscription-based?
So, yes. You are purchasing the cameras, but they, so the initial setup is a hundred and fifty dollars per camera and that is for them to come out, you know, get any permits or anything like that that's needed and then put the cameras up. They are, most of them are not dependent upon the infrastructure, so they are solar and cellular-based, so they don't need to be plugged into anything. They do have PTZ cameras that do require some sort of power to use, but for the most part, they are, like I said, solar, they're rechargeable and cellular-based, so they don't need, you know, any type of ethernet or anything like that. So, yeah, so you have to pay for that stuff, you know? And then they maintain them, so if anything goes wrong, they'll replace them. So this is, the upfront cost is actually higher than the fifteen thousand. It's, well, fifteen thousand plus a hundred and fifty for each camera for the installation, but then it's, then it's three thousand dollars per year per camera going forward.
So twelve next year?
Well, we get five, it'd be fifteen.
Fifteen? Okay, so it'll be reoccurring. Is it, the police department has some type of agreement or relationship with the Ring cameras? Is this, this is obviously different for all the reasons you described. Is it just the search feature or just having full access and being able to put the software to detect specific license plates or how to, what's the difference?
Yeah, so it's not just license plates. Like I said, we can, you can...
The BMW, yeah.
You can put in any description and it will give you a return of all of those vehicles that have passed through within a certain timeframe. You know, you put a description in, put a location in and a certain timeframe in, and it'll give you back, and it just, it really drastically reduces the time that it takes to investigate something like that. I mean, if you use the Ring kit systems or if you use security surveillance systems from, you know, from gas stations and retail stores and things like that, you still have to have someone sit down and go through the video to find what we're looking for where with this particular system, we put in our description and within moments, we get a return on what we're looking for. So, I mean, it's a huge savings in time that we would invest in investigating.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think the savings in time may justify the cost. Speaking of bank robberies, the one at, I believe, Key Savings Bank that happened this year, I don't know how much time was spent and how much time was necessary, but it was the door-to-door go and get footage from everybody and then I don't know how long it took to review that. So, obviously, there's, we're talking budget, there's costs associated with everything, so if that can take off some of that, I don't know how often that happens, but that was the circumstance where it did. So I think it's a great product for the city. I'll be interested to see the implementation.
Sure. Question on that?
Did we agree to this already?
No.
It's outlay, okay.
Nope, this is something that we're, we would really like to implement, but management in your hands, so.
Yeah.
And if, you know, if you'd like a greater demonstration and explanation on the Flock cameras, I can certainly put something together and have their representative come in. He's a lot better at explaining these things than I am and can show you specific examples of its use and, you know, successes. Their retention rate, I believe you said, is like a hundred and ninety percent or something like that, which means that not only is everyone, every agency that gets Flock cameras, not only are they keeping them, but they're also, year after year, getting more to, because of the success of the system, so. Don't quote me on that percentage, but I know it's over a hundred percent, so.
So this is, like, it'll be all connected to, assuming 5G at some point, that's the fastest stuff that's out there, right? You said it's all cellular.
Yes, sir.
It's all solar-powered? If anybody shoots one out, they'll come and replace it right away?
Correct.
And they're going to be everywhere in the country, like, soon?
Well, they're spreading very rapidly. Whether or not they're going to be everywhere in the country, I don't know. A lot of... A lot of large agencies have, um, you know, have them, have a lot of them. And then, no, or, the state of Wisconsin, um, is ramping up the use of those, uh, cameras now. So they're only about three years old, the, the company's only about three years old. So, um, and they've been very successful in, uh, implementing this program.
This is a company, like this is a, a company that owns these cameras? They set up the cellular network, it goes to them, to us? Or everything goes to them and then they, when you ask for something, they send it to you?
No, so we have a, it's like an online portal that we would have.
Okay.
Um, and, you know, we, we actually have the option to, uh, have exclusive use of our own cameras, uh, meaning we wouldn't share our cameras with other agencies. But, um, to me, that almost defeats your purpose in having them. Because if, if I'm going to exclude other agencies from the use of, you know, the, the, of our cameras, then, uh, then I'm probably not gonna have the use of all of these other cameras across the state or across the nation that, um, could provide, um, very valuable information in a, in a timely manner. So, um, so as far as, you know, that goes, we have control over what we have and where it goes and, and how it's used and, um, you know, as Jake, uh, said, policy, um, and, uh, implementation, all of those things. But it's a ver- it'd be just a very valuable tool.
I think that, um, I don't know, it, just talking about it, it's got my blood pumping really fast, like out of fear kinda like-
Really?
Yeah, no, I'm not, I'm a pretty squeaky clean dude, I think, for the most part, but-
Sure.
And we all are in here, right, for the most part, I'm sure we are, but-
So like, so like I said, there's no, there's no personal information being taken from anyone.
But once everything's in place, it's in place. I mean-
Sure.
Like, we lose control of that, like it's all set.
Right, and then when you walk, well, right now, you're on camera.
Right.
Um, which is no different. And then when you walk out of here, you jump in your car and you drive out of here, you know how many, how many different cameras you're gonna pass, um, on your way home tonight?
So you're saying it's already set up? This is just, this just adds to it and kinda connects all the interstates and all the roadways?
And it gives, and it gives us a, uh, a cert- the searchability, um, and, you know, the only, uh, the only information that we're getting is what we're, uh, is what we're looking for in, in identification of a description, if, if that makes sense to you. It's not, we're not trying to, um, we're not trying to, to capture any personal identifiable information from anyone at any time, uh...
In the end, I'm not, I'm not worried about you and us and around here. I'm, you know, like, once it's all connected and it, then, then we all have no idea who's controlling what. I mean, they got, they got their hands on it, so...
I don't have an answer for that.
Right, none, none of us do, that's the scary part.
I can just tell you what my, what my intent is, um...
And I appreciate that, I understand the goodness of it, don't get me wrong, but boy, oh, boy, thank you.
Um, obviously you think this, this is a pretty high on the wish list, it seems. You're in favor of this.
Absolutely.
And I'm looking at this as, um, only forty seven hundred and fifty dollars more than the, um, LexiPol, which you don't seem too thrilled with.
Right.
So, and you talked about up and, so, we pull that out and we add this in. How's that sound?
Well-
No, I'm just asking.
No, and, and, um, when I'm, when I'm able to evaluate, uh, fully evaluate LexiPol and the po- and the policies and things like that, then yeah, that may be a discussion that I, that I would be definitely willing to have. But I, without, uh, being able to fully vet the, the, uh, the services that were, are being provided by LexiPol, I don't want to prematurely make, uh, you know, I don't wanna make a mistake by, by dumping them because my first impression is that it's not working. It may be a situation where it wasn't, uh, properly maintained on my end. And if I'm able to, uh, to make those changes and, uh, routinely review and update and maintain those policies and LexiPol is the best way to do that, then, you know, then I'll be asking to keep that. So, but at this point, I, you know, I've been here since May, so I don't, I haven't had, uh, enough time to, to do that. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Go ahead.
We're not, we're ta- just talking budget tonight and we're not finalizing anything, but-
Certainly.
It is, uh, it's interesting, the flock cameras. You made a good point, there's cameras everywhere, you're already being watched, if you realize it or not. I, I would just wish we could see a, a draft policy or something before we purchase the cameras.
Certainly.
And see, 'cause I, sitting here right now, I mean, I know I, I'll probably go home and look up department's policies and see what they are, but, um, I just really have to think from the perspective of the residents and where their head would be at hearing something like this. And, and if they're gonna ask me questions about, hey, the flock cameras are getting implemented, how do I answer, what are the policies?
Right.
And you talked a little bit about they're not gonna be used, but, um, for anything other than the, the searchability and-
Mm-hmm.
I think they come with a, a technology that other cameras don't have and, and their ability, whether you wanna call it software or artificial intelligence to identify specific vehicles, plates, et cetera, that may not be implemented in, in different camera systems we have. And I, I, something I have to look in more, is it US-based? I, I don't, I just don't know enough to say like I'm a hundred percent on the flock cameras.
No, absolutely, I, I fully, I, I fully understand where you're coming from there. It is a US company, but, uh, so the, the technology, uh, the cameras themselves, uh, aren't what has that capability. It's the, it's the software side of it, that web-based, uh, um, search engine, uh, for, I guess, for lack of a better term. And, um, you could use, you know, the cameras in here for the same purpose. Now, these cameras have great resolution, uh, and things like that, so that it makes it easier to, to identify, you know, for the, for the system to identify a license plate or a particular bumper sticker or color or damage or, you know, whatever identifiable, uh, thing that we put in there. But yes, I, I, you know, I, I, not to get too far off track, I, I understand that and, uh, that's something that I can, uh, definitely at least give you an idea of what a policy would look like for, for that system. You know, obviously you have your constituents to answer to, um, and, uh, I'd be more than happy to, uh, try to put something together policy-wise.
I'd appreciate it, 'cause we move forward in the budget process here, you know, it's gonna go through, we're, if, depending on how we vote, we're purchasing flock cameras and, and, uh, we just gave a good description, or you did, of what exactly they are, which is good, 'cause the public should be aware. But then, when the questions come of how we're gonna use them versus their capabilities of how they could be used, I would just like to have a policy before we purchase them or a draft policy that I could say, this is exactly how they're gonna be used, you know, nothing to worry about or-
I, that's not, that's not an unreasonable request.
Yeah, thank you.
So, I mean, kinda, what kinda timeline you want here, when you want this?
If you can find a fit, similar policy that you're looking to implement, um, that already exists or, I, I would say before we purchase the cameras.
No, I could certainly have that, I could, I could have a-
Which would-
-policy from another agency in the next couple of days.
Yeah, I mean, whenever, whenever you get it, 'cause if I can speak to it more and, and read the policy or if someone asks me about them, you know, I think it definitely makes sense for the, the police department and join these other agencies and assist in, um, solving crimes and stopping crimes in the community. I just wanna be able to speak to it more on exactly-
Absolutely.
-how we'll use it.
So, how about if I do this, I give you, I get you at least an example, maybe not a Wisconsin Rapids draft policy, but an example policy by this time next week?
That would work for me, yeah.
Yep, that'd be good.
Okay.
Your honor?
Chief, do you know of anybody in the area that has them?
So, um, the county is put, put them, they don't have them yet, but they've put them in their budget. Um, I, I wanna say Marshfield may have them already.
Yeah, I, I guess my point was gonna be most likely a lot of us have already been by flock cameras and our vehicles are-
Yeah, that's-
-probably already somewhere for thirty days in the system.
Yeah, and, and actually I can, I can get a better, a better idea, I don't, off the top of my head, I don't know. I know there's some locally, and that's how we, that's how we were able to track down that individual that I was telling you about earlier with the FBI, because it was a neighboring jurisdiction that had, uh, the flock cameras and we put his vehicle information in, or we got ahold of that, that agency and we put his vehicle information in and, and, uh, we were locating within just a short amount of time. So yes, I can get you, uh, a list of, you know, neighboring jurisdictions. As well, so...
Wanna move on to the other item in there?
Sure.
More called, even?
Yeah, so, um, our contract for body worn cameras is up. And, um, I did get, uh, three different quotes on body worn cameras and, uh, Exxon has come to be the best option for the body worn cameras. In fact, uh, what, what they're going to provide in a five-year contract is forty, uh, body worn cameras, so that everyone on the department has them. Currently, we don't all have them and, uh, including myself, I'll have one. The detectives, they don't currently all have them, they will all have them. All the patrol officers will have them, uh, the SROs, um, so bottom, bottom up, top down, whatever, will all have them. And in this, in the contract, uh, they provide for, uh, a replacement of the cameras after, in, at the midpoint of the contract, the five-year contract, two and a half years from now, they will replace all of the equipment with whatever the new technology is at the time. Plus, uh, they have a five-year warranty, whereas, uh, if we were to purchase them, they come with a one-year manufacturer's warranty and then once that one-year manufacturer warranty is up, then, you know, you have to purchase all new equipment. Uh, this also includes tasers, uh, which is a newer taser, not the newest taser. The newest taser is a taser ten, uh, we're going with the taser seven to save some costs. But to give you an idea of the, the cost of the tasers, if we were to purchase them, they, they run about eighteen hundred dollars apiece. So if we were to purchase forty tasers right now, it'd be an eighty thousand dollar purchase. That's included with, in the costs of this program. And, um, then they will have that five-year, uh, warranty and, uh, you know, they are replaced if, uh, if, uh, if needed and, um, you know, repaired if they're broken. And, and if, if one gets, if one is broken during this contract, they will send us a new one before we even send them the old one back, so that, uh, we don't go long periods of time without, um, the technology. So, do you have any additional questions on that?
Patrick?
Oh, sorry, I do have one other thing before, before you, you do that. The, uh, um, the current, we're currently paying sixteen thousand dollars a year, uh, through E- evidence for evidence dot com, which is, stores all of our video evidence. And that will be eliminated and, and be part of this package. So that sixteen thousand dollar line, uh, will be eliminated and then that will be part of the sixty-two thousand dollars a year, or for the first annual. And then it's, uh, yeah, sixty-two, uh, three twenty-two for the annual cost.
And where's that sixteen in the?
Yeah, so, um, actually it might not even be, I may have taken it out. I can't remember if I did or not, sixteen thousand?
It was previously budgeted in the software, so that's why you see that reduction of five thousand, um, and change in that line item in the operating budget?
Right, so... Yeah, so that was that sixteen oh seven four, um, was for that. We actually, um, lumped other, uh, software into, into that. So our savings was just the five thousand six forty-eight for this year. If we eliminate that sixteen thousand dollars, uh, for the, um, that storage of, uh, the licensing and storage of the, the video evidence.
So that ten four twenty-six doesn't have any, that's completely different?
Right, that's correct.
Patrick?
How many cameras do we currently have?
Uh, I think we have thirty-two currently.
Why do we have so many? I mean, we have five people on patrol.
Right, so, um, because of the, um, the software involved and, and they're not, each, each one is assigned to each individual that's on patrol, that's why. So, having that, it, it's very cumbersome to try to share a camera. So if, and, and that's just the way that they're, they're developed, so that, um, that you get one for, for each individual. As far as, I mean, you could have, you could have one that is like, uh, spare and it would come up when it's recording as a spare, because that's the way it's, it's been programmed. So in a pinch, if an officer's, uh, camera is down and, and hasn't been replaced yet, they can use the spare, but it doesn't identify them. It's a, the, the process to take and assign that particular item to an individual is cumbersome.
Did you get a quote for replacing just those thirty-two or did you just get the quote for the forty?
Uh, we did just do for the, for the forty, so that we could, uh, outfit everyone with their own, with their own cameras, so that, uh, we would have that transparency and accountability for if, I currently don't have one, so if I'm out, uh, in the public and dealing with a, a law enforcement-related activity, then my actions are not being recorded. So, uh, you know, in the past, uh, chiefs have not wanted them. But, you know, if I'm requiring my officers to wear one on the street, then I should be wearing one. And I'm out on the street as well. I think that's a, a logical thing to do and there are times when I'm, uh, assisting with calls and, uh, and dealing with, uh, individuals in a law enforcement function. And I believe that, uh, you know, if I, if we're gonna require an officer to have a camera, then in the, in those circumstances, then I should have a camera in those circumstances.
I'm just confused because bef- uh, earlier this summer, we had gone through a, a few different things. This was, it might even been last year, before you were here. And, um, I was under the impression that only about half the staff that you have is actually out on the street. You have a, a lot of, uh, backup staff and daytime staff and whatever that does stuff in the office.
But when, but when the, when those individuals go out on, do go out on the street, whether they're, uh, assigned to patrol function or not, they, as a nature of the job, they may encounter some law enforcement type activity. And I want them to be in a position to where, you know, they can record that activity just like everyone else. And, you know, I, there are, there's been a number of times where I've been sitting at my desk and, you know, hear a major traffic crash or, uh, you know, hear an officer in a foot chase or something like that, and I'll get up off my desk and I'll walk out and jump in my squad car and go help. So those individuals that are in the station, behind the scenes, administrative functions, can in an instant become a patrol- um, can in an instant become a patrol officer, you know, out on the street because of necessity.
Okay, that wasn't made clear when we had, not you and me, when we had this conversation before. It sounded like about half of them actually worked with the public and the other half hid in a closet somewhere.
Well, I'm, I apologize, I, I'm so, I'm sorry for that because, but that's not my, uh, that's not how I operate. Uh, for, for me, as a, as a chief of police, I expect everyone that wears a badge and carries a gun at a moment's notice to be able to walk out and be a cop, period. Uh, there's no excuse for, uh, oh no, I'm, I'm sitting at my desk or, or whatever, I can't go out. We've got speakers in our building that broadcast the radio. So even if they forget to turn their portable radio on, they're going to hear calls. And, you know, I'll be, I'll be darned if, if I hear one of my officers out on the street screaming for help and we don't clear that building.
Anybody else? Okay, move on to replacements on that.
Okay, um, so this is, 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 this is that new stuff that we were talking about, or is this something different?
As far as, well-
Where we lumped all that, all the same costs into the, into the same line as far as replacement vehicles and, um-
Right, this is a replacement which covers, you know, basically mostly your, your vehicles and the, the related equipment to outfit the vehicle.
Right.
But new to this year is the, the police department equipment fund. Um, we, this is a new addition and in this year's budget for the police department. It's similar to the one in the fire department. And basically what it's, it's meant to is to fund all the, the kind of the equipment purchases. You know, the, you'll see down there under the, the explanations, it's ballistic vests, the SRT heavy vests and ballistic plates, squad radios, the big ones are the squad radios and mobile radios. So basically the premise behind this is a budgeting an amount each year to put in this fund so then when we have to replace radios, vests, things like that, we, we have those funds available. Like I said, it's similar to the one like in the, the fire department equipment for their, their, um, what are those that? Small tools, no, but it's their, uh, turnout gear and, and, and things like that. So it's kind of similar, so that way, you know, the budget doesn't ebb and flow based on when you have to do these major purchases that we estimate, as you can see there, we, we kind of come up with a unit cost, the number, the estimated life, and then kind of come up with an annual depreciation. So then when we replace those, we have the funds to replace them.
And, and one thing that, um, we had talked a little bit about earlier was the, the portable radios. And they, um, were kind of, we're in the, not kind of, we are in the process of, of replacing those. And that was what I had mentioned earlier, that we had applied for a grant, um, to replace. I, I don't, I, I don't know if it was nine or ten of those, um, in the grant. And if we get that, uh, then we'll, you know, realize the savings of, of nearly fifty thousand dollars from, uh, from that. And then that will put us in a, a really good position, uh, to save money in the future by replacing those, uh, now as opposed to only replacing, you know, four of them now. If that makes sense. So. And then, um, emergency communications, the, the sirens, uh, and equipment maintenance for that. That is the, the weather sirens around town. And this year, um, we had to replace, uh, I believe, I think we have seven of the, seven total sirens. And we ended up having to replace, uh, batteries and, uh, rechargeable batteries in those, uh, in those sirens. Uh, because we had a, like, three of them, three or four of them, I think, were failing this year. Um, so that's where this, uh, this fund comes from. Uh, the equipment maintenance of five hundred dollars, uh, that's for actual, like, the physical box that houses the, uh, the, uh, controls for the sirens and, you know, locks for the boxes. And, you know, they get, uh, beat up by the weather and, you know, the, the, uh, locks on them rust and become inoperable and need to be replaced and, and, uh, and things like that, so. And then, um, the auxiliary, uh, police, that's not changed at all, um, for this year. Uh, and I'll tell you, for a six thousand dollar a year budget for the auxiliary police, you get so much more than that in, in return. Um, there at all of our events, we had, I don't know, like, four or five of them at the Fourth of July, uh, helping us, uh, patrol the fireworks area and things like that. And if we didn't have them, we would have had to place more police officers downtown. Uh, just, I mean, and that's just one example of, you know, of the things that they do for us. Uh, you know, any special event, uh, they're always there and they're always willing to help. And it's just a huge, uh, huge help to us and a huge cost savings by having them present a lot of these events. That's all I've got.
Thank you. So I'm going to get, go to the same thing I did with the fire chief, although you haven't been here as long so I don't expect you to be able to speak to all this and Tim might have to fill in. But the overall police budget went from four point five million to five, in twenty twenty to five point seven in twenty twenty-four. Um, just to explain it as, if someone were to just look at this document and see what a, the police department cost in twenty twenty and now what it costs in twenty-four, what could you speak to as been the reasons for the increase? And like I said, we know some of them, but if you're just speaking generally?
Yeah, in general terms, I mean, obviously, uh, you can see the increase in wages just straight across the board from twenty twenty, uh, to, to twenty twenty-four. Uh, that's, you know, almost a million dollar increase between that, in that time period by itself. So if you're talking forty-five, uh, or four point five, or this, even this four point one million in, that I see on, uh, the total wages and benefits from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-four, um, you know, I mean, that, that's the majority of what you're, of what you're looking at in that, in that cost increase. Now, you'll also have to take into consideration that all costs are going up. You know, the cost of fuel for our vehicles go, is, is increasing. Uh, the cost of, um, um, round ammunition for our firearms is, is, is increasing. Uh, the cost of uniforms, uh, goes up every year. Um, I mean, the cost of vehicles goes up, you know, a, a percentage every year. So all of those things, um, are, you know, what I can attribute that, that increase to. You know, we'd have to really sit down and, and crunch all the numbers for me to give you specifics. But, uh, I mean, it's pretty clear to me that, um, the majority of that is wages. And then you've got a few hundred thousand dollars over the course of that, of that time period where, um, you know, technol- technological, uh, advances, um, increases in equipment costs, uh, fuel, uh, vehicles, uh, and all those things.
Thank you. So if I'm, I'm a resident, we know the cost of increase across the board for everything, every department. The one point two we've added headcount, right, is that, um-
Correct, we've, we've added two positions, uh, the code enforcement position and the administrative lieutenant position.
Okay. And I'm going to talk about the code enforcement position. Um, but saving it for budget time, but I'm just going to be upfront about it. We went through it in HR, it didn't get a, a second, so it failed there, it was pulled back out at council, it was approved. So it is a, a position and within the city, we have this process where a position is approved at HR and then it's chose whether or not to be funded by finance or at the budget. Uh, so it, it wasn't approved at HR, but it was pulled out, approved at common council. I wasn't in favor of it then and I won't be in favor of, of funding it at this time. Um, a lot of it has to do specifically with the code, not necessarily the enforcer of it. And I, I think we really need to address that upfront. I'll, I'll just be honest and I, I'm sure some of you have the same experience, but the, the majority of calls and complaints I get outside of when we have an active topic like ATV, UTV, is all regarding the code. And I mean, you can pull it up and pick which section you want, but it, it, it just seems to be a, a thorn in some resident's side. And then when, uh, code violation comes up and is enforced, there's this, uh, I don't know if it's the general phrase that's given, but these people are given direction to call their alderperson. So I'm, I get calls all the time regarding the code and it has nothing to do with the enforcer or even necessarily Kyle, I mean, we went back with Kyle, but he was, he's given the code, he's pretty black and white on it. But we need to take a look at that and some of it is pretty obvious stuff. Like, of course, if your yard is, is a safety violation because of, you know, rubbish you have in there, other things are small things. You know, why can't I do this, why can't I do that? And I'm really hesitant to fund, uh, forty-hour position a week, even if they don't spend all forty hours enforcing code, going out and enforcing a code that oftentimes residents aren't happy with. We have yet to take a look at it and I think in this year, we need to address that. And part of that might be doing what was done previously and bringing in an outside firm because I've, I've asked community development to address this and, and they're bringing, you know, little change by little change. But overall, I don't think that the code reflects our city. I think that under the previous administration, it was written for a community that was more hoping to look like, like a Stevens Point or a, a Madison, just one that, that doesn't fit our demographics, our, our living areas. So I'm, I'm hesitant to put someone out there and then constantly, you know, they'll be enforcing code, which is their job. And then I'm getting calls and it's, the route for aldermen to address the code is bring up each individual issue as I get called for it and I'm their representative, uh, yeah, I'll, you know, or just tell them to deal with it. But I have to bring it, a change to the, the ordinance to take care of this one problem. And some of it's a lot of problems reoccurring, some of them are one-off. But I think overall, I would like to see business owners, residents come in here and be part of that conversation. And I think in twenty twenty-four, we need to have that. And I would like to do that before we put someone out on the street and tell them, hey, go enforce this code that, uh, you're going to hear from the alderman on it, you're going to hear from the residents, they don't like it. It, it would be a tough job. Uh, so the position again, as I went through, is created. The, in addition to the, the, the cameras and the other thing, I just think not funding this position this year would be the best move until we can address the code and it would also save on costs. So, I, I don't think it's a secret, that's where I've stood on this the whole time. It's, uh, we went over this when it was pulled out for HR. Um, I think glaring issues in, in the code enforcement, from what I've heard, are being addressed currently. And I think we could stay under that process of, of what we're currently doing until we get down to the bottom of this problem, which isn't really the police department's issue. But if we were to put an ordinance officer out there and that was their job, that would be an, an issue to residents who are calling me about it. And I just don't know how it would be utilized if they're going to drive around and constantly look for code violations that aren't being reported or if we're still working on what we are right now, which is kind of the tattletale system of, I don't, I don't like-
I can answer that. Uh, so right now, he's, a lot of, a lot of his job is playing catch-up. Um, and dealing with, uh, things that have come in, uh, that haven't been addressed, um, that were in need of being addressed. And, you know, you know, you get complaints from individuals who are, um, calling you because they, uh, they've committed some sort of violation that they don't agree with, right? Is that what you're telling me?
Sometimes, or sometimes they're going down to community development and be told they would be posing a potential violation if they were to do a simple yard project or operate a certain type of business and, and things like that. It's not all the people who are in a code violation that would probably still exist in a new code. It's some of the one-offs that I, the only thing that we can do as our elected officials is say, hey, we'll propose a change to the code. But they just keep stacking up and stacking up and they're, they're not getting addressed.
So here's, here's my, my position on, um, well, pretty much all enforcement, not just code enforcement. Um, I give my officers discretion and my, uh, philosophy on enforcement is, uh, what's going to correct the behavior? So, you know, if, uh, our current code enforcement officer goes out and sees a violation, you know, he's going to point the violation out to the individual and not take enforcement action immediately. Uh, you know, we're not, uh, we're not, uh, in, you know, zero tolerance type, type mode here. Uh, what we want to do is to educate and inform people of the particular ordinance that they may be in violation of before we take any enforcement action. Um, now, if it's an ongoing problem or if the person refuses to, uh, you know, take corrective action, then yes, we're going to take enforcement action. Uh, but as you alluded to, ultimately, uh, if that code needs to be changed, that is out of my hands. It's just like any state statute, you know, I can't pick and choose, uh, what I enforce and what I, and what I don't enforce. What I can do is give, again, give my officers discretion in, in how they enforce those things. But ultimately, it's my responsibility, uh, to have those things enforced. And as long as, uh, these ordinances are on the books, whether it's a parking ordinance or grass is too long or you've got trash in your yard or things like that, um, I would not be doing my job if I overlooked those things. So, uh, having a full-time position that is out there, uh, addressing those things, whether it's enforcement action or not, most often it's not. Uh, there, uh, there was a, this, I, I, I don't remember the, the exact location, but it's by one of the grade schools. There's a corner house there that had car parts and everything, all trash on their yard. And it was pointed out to me and I went out there and I looked at it and then I, uh, went to, uh, Todd Andrews, who's our, our current code enforcement officer, and said, hey, you know, this needs to be addressed. It was pointed out to me and within a couple of days, that situation was taken care of because I had a uniform officer go out, knock on the door and address the situation with this individual and the individual took care of it without any enforcement action being taken whatsoever and without a complaint. So, I mean, that's, you know, one example, but, uh, you know, I get where you're coming from. Uh, I don't always agree with things either, you know, I don't agree with some of the state statutes. I don't agree with some of the federal statutes, I don't agree with some of these ordinances. Uh, but as long as they're on the books, I'm going to, I'm, I'm going to enforce them and, and my officers are going to enforce them regardless of whether we have, uh, an enforcement or a, a code enforcement officer. Now, without the code enforcement officer, it's still going to be our responsibility. And I'll tell you what, we don't have time on patrol. We tried it for a couple of months before we were able, when, when Ray retired and before we were able to actually get this position in place. Uh, we put that onus on our patrol officers to handle and it was just too much, uh, for them to handle. So, you know, you may be getting complaints about an officer coming to your constituent's house right now uh, to inf- to address these issues. Uh, but if we don't fund this position and we don't maintain this position, you're going to get a ton more complaints about people, uh, wanting these things addressed. You know, the trash in the yards and the things like that and why aren't these, why aren't these things being, uh, being taken care of? Because we won't have time to do it without that position.
Um, you're done?
No, I'm not. Uh, no, I understand, that is your guys' job and duty. And I just think as a, the legislative body of the city, we need time to dig- And I just think as a, the legislative body of the city, we need time to dig, to dig into this. And get one in place that seems more correct. It's not always the junk in the yard. I mean, I've had businesses call me that are struggling with areas of the code. That are either threatened to be enforced or they're potentially looking to do a business activity that they can't do. Because they've been told it's against. And I, my volume of calls for people who have issues with the code versus, and I, this has been over a period of years. Versus people who want code enforced is, I mean, it's not even close. So I, it's not that I disagree with anything you said in regards to how the police department handles the code. But as you said, if it is the code, then it will be enforced. And I think we need to address that before we fund someone that that's their job. I would hate to even put anybody in that.
So I will tell, I will tell you that, uh, those, those building codes, those business codes, those, uh. Resident, the, the more community development type codes, those are still being handled, uh, through Kyle's office. We address more of the nuisance codes than, than those codes. So, um, so as far as you're talking about this position, those things that you're talking about with the businesses and the resident, the, the building codes and things like that. They're not handled through, through our office. We just handle like the nuisance stuff, so.
I, I understand. I, who would enforce, I, I'm not talking about building codes per se. There's areas of the code that you wouldn't even think are there and are there. That's kinda, it, it, I don't even wanna give an example. Because I'd be outing the businesses that have ran into it. But it, it's, you know, you can operate your business this way. And no different than that, or you're out of compliance. And then if Kyle's department, well, they tell them that upfront is part of the issue. And then they think they cannot operate that way. If they go then say this person's out of compliance, this officer would be the one to go enforce it? Okay, well. Overall, I mean, that's kind of my stance on it. I would, the position's there. It's, council already went through that, although I disagreed with it. It, it's there. I'm not gonna say we shouldn't have the position. It's, it's a position. It went through the right legislative process. It was approved. But as far as funding it this year, and it's gonna be part of a larger conversation. Uh, I don't know if we're gonna have that tonight, but of what we're doing with the budget, if we're balancing it or if we're taking out debt. But all these things have to be considered. So this is one of them I just, I, I can't get on board with right now. Um, until we address some other issues.
Okay, um, myself and then Shane, I believe, and, um, yeah, I, um. I respectfully disagree on this one. And the code's in place. Um, the code is in place and, um, quite frankly, it wasn't real, before we approved this, um, switching the code, code officer. To the police rather than to community development, before we approved it, many violations were not being enforced. I'm fully in favor of enforcing the code. If we wanna change the code at another point, that's another story. But at this point, the code is in place and we're doing a budget with a code in place that needs to be enforced. And, um, there's so many incidences that our property values are being affected. It's with, um, vehicles that have been in yards for ages and that were never enforced. I know I met with, with chief about he's, as you mentioned just a few minutes ago, you're in catch up mode. Because you're basically finally catching up on all these codes that have, all these lack of enforcement previously. And so the bottom line is, is I'm fully in favor of this being a police, um, responsibility. Just because I think people are way more apt to, um, when they see the badge at the door, are way more apt to react. Favorably and, um, enforce, you know, live within the code. We can certainly move the code. We can certainly bring up the differences in the code at another point. But for budget purposes, the code exists. So, um, if we've moved this to, to the police department, I'm in favor of funding the position. Thanks. Um, I think Tom was next.
I don't know, I lost the call. No, and I, I agree, uh, um, it's there. I disagreed, I guess, shifting it to the police department, but it's there. And I understand, uh, that's where it is and that's how we're gonna deal with it. If there's people who don't like, and, and that's not for us to really to talk about tonight. If we, if somebody doesn't like what, how the code reads, it's up to somebody to bring that forward to try and change that code. What the code is, that's what we live by, like it or not. And before I jump into anything like that, even though it's not part of the budget process. It's just because somebody might not like something, does that mean we change the whole dang thing? It may be very good, but somebody may not like it. So there's a, you know, look at this, what's it there for? Not, not just because somebody doesn't like it. A lot of times people don't like something because they gotta pick it up. They gotta do something better than what they're doing. They wanna get the cheap way out. Thank you.
I obviously extremely disagree, um, especially by the volume of calls I personally get in our office. It is, I think one person makes it almost, it's almost unmanageable. There is such a volume of nuisance, garbage, bed springs, couches, laying around in people's yard. And if that's how we want our community to be represented, okay, you know, that, I guess that's up to the eight here. And if we're gonna try to do something different here and promote our community and do development. Having our community look rundown and having garbage and mattresses in your yards is not a way to sell our community. And I, I just disagree and, and I disagreed with, you know, Kyle did the best he could. I've seen, I've seen where we've had four part-time people at one time trying to do code enforcement. I've seen full-time, um, we were fortunate enough to have retired deputy in the last one. But having it in the police department in a uniformed officer is more effective to get people to maybe voluntarily comply to do this. And just, but you can't imagine the sheer volume. I can go to my coffee with the mayor at the senior center and I get lists of property. And I'm emailing him. People are complaining about buildings that are half-built for four years on their property. And then I ask Kyle about it and what they have to do is they have to take a police officer with them. Cause when they show up as a citation, they just crumple it up and throw it on the ground and walk away. And there are property after property like that in this community. And we cannot sell ourselves as a community if we're gonna look rundown. And I just, this is an important position and it needs to be maintained.
Don't misconstrue my comments that I'm pro leaving mattresses and furniture in someone's yard. That, those aren't the parts of the code I'm talking about. I'm talking about, but di, di, different areas. There's some obvious things that should be in a municipal code. And there's a ton of areas right now that I, when you go into it and someone brings one of these issues to you and you read that it's in there. It's surprising it's even in there. And I believe we should address it before we let someone lose to enforce all these things. I think the obvious things, like I said, need to be enforced. Nobody wants any of that. But there's other areas that we just let time go by. We let it stay in place and I bring it up all the time. Where I'm unfortunately going back and forth with Kyle and it's not his fault. But I would like to see us take this up before we fund this. It, that, that's where I'm at. I'm not pro letting the community be run down, half-built buildings or whatever else was said. I just would like it to be, the council takes it up and then we can properly enforce a, a, a code that people agree with more. I'm, if someone's got a situation where it's an obvious one, I mean, you, they give them advice on what they're gonna do. Or they're coming to city court. It's, it's not those areas.
I think Mr. Catnau is right, but also you guys are right as well, if that's possible. I just had a question for the chief. When, when you have, uh, a code violation and they, they come out there. You said that he comes out and discusses it with them. Does he let them know what the potential fines are before he gives them? Like, he's not going out writing tickets, he said, right?
Correct. Yes. So, um, I, I'll, I'll tell you what, uh, since I put, uh, Todd, Ted Andrews in, in that position. He has, uh, he's done an amazing job. He's taking, taken a considerable amount of time. To, uh, read, review and understand our ordinances. I'm, I'm, I'm not. Yes, well, and, and, and I have too, but what I'm saying, I mean, he's taken the time and the effort. To, uh, to go through the municipal code and have a thorough understanding of what he's supposed to be out there enforcing. And if he has a question, he brings it up. And, uh, you know, we've, uh, addressed some questions, you know, through Sue and, um, and also through discussion and things like that. So, uh, you know, I get, I get where you're coming from. If, if, if the code is bad and it needs to be updated, it should be updated. But it's what's currently in place and to ignore those things. While we do the process of, of updating those things or correcting those, those issues, you know. I don't know that that's the answer, you know, I, I think that while we have an ordinance in pla, or these ordinances in place. Then they should be enforced. If you guys wanna make changes to, to the ordinances, a complete overhaul of the municipal code. Uh, then you can do that, but in the meantime, you know, let us do our job and let us have that individual in place to, to do that. Uh, without burdening, uh, the rest of the police department with that function. Because if you don't fund that position, uh, somebody's, there's no other place for it to go. Ray retired, so it's not going back to community development and we're still going to get complaints. And my response isn't going to be, uh, well, the council is looking to overhaul the ordinance or the, the municipal code. So we're just not enforcing the municipal, municipal code right now. That, I just don't think that, that would make me look bad, uh, and that would, that would make my organization look bad. And in turn, I think it would make the city administration look bad. So, uh, let's fund this position and then in the meantime, make your changes. And then when you eliminate things that he's currently enforcing, then he will no longer enforce them because they're no longer part of the ordinance. But I think we, I think we can do both. I don't think we have to, uh, not fund this position. While we look at making changes to the municipal code. Keep, keep this position because it's the only position that we have enforcing those ordinances. And then overhaul the municipal code. And when those things, those changes are made, then my officer will no longer enforce those things.
Yeah, and I don't know Jake, maybe we're kinda talking about apples and oranges. Because I think something what, what you're talking about in community development is more through the zoning code. And some of those regulations and, you know, I, the community, I don't know when it was Tom, but a handful of years. We spent probably under a hundred thousand dollars to redo the zoning code. But I, I said, I highly suggest anybody to come in and tag along with Todd. Because literally it's hoarder stuff. I've seen full yards full of tarps. And stuff just underneath there, um, and it's couches and mattress things, abandoned disabled vehicles. And that's really all he's enforcing, but it, it is just such a massive amount right now. And, and it's constantly complaints and soon it's gonna be, you know, I, I speak to people in the winter time complaining about shovel sidewalks not being shoveled. After twenty-four hours after a snowstorm and, and these, some of these people are, you know, hey, I moved in from Grand Rapids. And then we like to walk and we can't walk on the sidewalks. We have to walk in the middle of the road. Because nobody's enforcing these people to clear up their sidewalks. And, and once that starts, it's gonna come full force. And they complain about businesses on A Street not shoveling their sidewalks. Cause a lot of people will head to A Street to walk, hoping that the sidewalks are cleared there and there's businesses that don't clear it. And I, and that's the kind of things that Officer Andres is enforcing. But the business end of it, yeah, that's through our zoning code and it's really, and a lot of money was spent on it. I wouldn't recommend redoing it, but I think if you have areas of concerns in there, that's what the referral process is. And bring them forward and let's get them changed. Cause I, I think the more we can help support our businesses and I always say the less hurdles that they have in front of them, maybe the more success they can have. But I really do believe these are two different issues. Thank you.
Yeah, and I think we are talking apples and oranges, but I do know that there, as you stated, there's a cost associated with taking a look at that. And oftentimes I, I believe it, it's such an overwhelming process as it was done in the past. And it does take an outside consultant and it does take money. That's kinda where I'm coming from. But like, it is apples and oranges compared to what I'm talking about. And all, all the issues that Officer Andres is addressing right now. However, I did, hope as a council that we can take a look at that in the future. Because I've talked to some of you about it, about some of the calls I get. And I would hope as a city, we can do what chief said and do both at the same time if you guys decide to move forward with this. But so far, I mean, every time I talk code, it, it just doesn't sound like it's resonating with the rest of council. And I, we don't really have a consensus on there needs to be changes or not, and that's kinda where I'm at. But certainly the things that are obvious and need to be enforced, should be enforced. But there's a whole other area of it that I would like to see addressed that is not being addressed and I'll just leave it at that.
Yeah, I don't know if you're ready to move on for my greater discussion that we had at council. You know, I, I really think, cause Tim pointed out three options, we're two point four million dollars short. And I think realistically, I think the council needs to decide, or what are we, are you comfortable with on the fill that two point four million? Cause you know, Catherine's here, obviously in case the library comes up and they're gonna, gonna, you're gonna cut money, you know? Cause the whole point of having committee of the whole was to get in the whole council here to make decisions and motions about budget. And I'm kinda wondering, are we waiting till a special night and we're gonna just do it all in one night? Or, but I think the first thing you need to do is, is whether it be a straw poll, is say, okay, we have one point eight million dollars worth of, uh, road construction. Historically, we've always funded that through, um, through issue of debt. Is that something that the council by a straw poll is gonna do? Or are we gonna use some of the other money that we have maybe to reduce that amount of debt this year? Oh, and, you know, with ARPA money, FEMA money, um, additional shared revenue. I think that's the important conversation here, cause you all have the budget. You all kinda know what's in them already. I'm sure you've all looked at it. And so everything these people are saying, I think is important that we have them here in question, especially the new things. But we, we know wages are gonna go up and we know city hall rent's gonna change, cause the cost of electricity and everything's gonna change. But it's really about deciding so Catherine doesn't have to come to every meeting, even though she probably would, to know if the library's gonna have a cut. Because they need to prepare to make those cuts. If you're gonna cut fifty bucks out of there, fifty bucks has to come out of some line. And, you know, Jake's been here. He's presented his budget. The police and fire have been here. And people need to know how we're gonna go forward. So if you decide you're need to cut budgets to raise money, then that's probably a discussion that you need to have. To decide whether or not the police and fire have presented budgets that you plan to cut down because you wanna use that money somewhere else. But every week, we're gonna come with more departments and we're gonna be in the same situation. And every department's gonna be wondering, well, is council gonna, how are they gonna fund this year's budget? And, and Tim could probably fill in gaps if I'm missing. But, you know, there is, there is funding sources there for that, that gap there. And we've done historical things and I think, you know, the stormwater utility can be raised. Because that should really pay for stormwater construction, which then reduces obviously the, the borrowing side for that. And, you know, transportation utility, um, is short a little bit. So it, within the budget, there is a, a, a cost, a cost increase built in there to make up, you know, every year. And so I, I just think for everybody's sake is, you know, maybe that discussion needs to be had. And so I, I just think for everybody's sake is, you know, maybe that discussion needs to be had now versus, you know, near the end of the budget and we're gonna be here on the final night. Budgets are getting cut and we're trying to figure out how we're gonna fund this. And I don't think that's a good time to do it. Thank you.
Tim, the first night you had, uh, you had a handout. Do you either have copies of those or could you email that over to me?
Sure, right now.
That would be great. Thanks.
Jake, do you have something?
Yes, this is actually something that I've been thinking about every night we've been here and had departments heads meet. Because even in smaller committees, things we've done, uh, we spend all year. It's, it, it doesn't seem like we're ever going throughout the year and looking at taking on less expenses. It's always a purchase of, and it's all things we need. It's about finding the line between need and where we're at. Because financially, and I, I've said this in previous meetings, I'm, I'm glad the mayor brought this up. We're running out of deficit. And I personally would like to see the budget balanced. We're, we're at a deficit because of roads, but we're creeping up there for some other issues as well. And some council seats have changed, but the rhetoric's been over the last few years of let's get out of debt, let's change the deficit. And I'm all for that. But I think we went through four departments now and there really hasn't been any proposed cuts. Everything went up. Our finances aren't going up. And I hate to sit up here and be the bad guy each time a department head comes in and we gotta talk about, you know, what they say we need, but what we don't have money to fund. And a lot of it's wages and it's an uncomfortable conversation about head count and what that costs and the city and what we have in revenue. And I just don't know at what point we're going to address this issue as this council, the next council, the council after. And at what point it just gets out of control where, uh, we're, we're gonna, hopefully, we can keep it from ever getting there if we manage right year after year. But year after year, we're adding positions, we're giving raises, we have other costs that are uncontrollable. So I'm looking, I'm interested in what we're gonna decide tonight. I, I think it's hard to say this late in the game that we're not gonna bond for roads. Let's, let's be honest. Because we had four departments come in and no major cuts were proposed. So like the mayor said, unless we're gonna do this magically on one night, we're taking out more debt. But what, what do we, when we go into the new year after the budget's completed, what are, what is our position financially? And that's why I think it's so important we have a straw poll. Are we gonna work the year towards a balanced budget? Or are we gonna work to operate the city as we always have, which is take out debt every year? I'm in favor of working towards balancing the budget. It's not easy. It does mean that our biggest expense, which is wages, has to come down along with many other things. But yeah, I'd like to know where everybody's at and how we can get there. I'm for balancing the budget over time. If we can squeeze it in here at the end of the year, we'll put in the work to do that. But if not, then what are we, what are we looking at, at, in budget discussions? So similar to what, uh, the mayor said, so that at the end, we're not in this big, you know, cut ten percent, let's not take debt, et cetera.
Patrick.
Okay, this is great. So anyways, um, my question was, we had nine hundred and three, oh, to answer his question, I'm all for balancing the budget. So, um, and I had asked a question at the first meeting, if any of these were duplicated. And it may be better to explain that, like, you have your different options. Are they, is there any, like, like the EMS fund in option one or something? Yeah, on, on the first one. Is that duplicated in the supplemental county and municipal aid at all? Or is that?
Well, what it is, is that supplemental aid would reduce the levy, say the EMS fund, that's where, okay. So you got nine hundred ninety-nine, a million dollar levy, it's just wrong figures. Utilizing supplemental aid would reduce that levy, which would then reduce the amount that were over the levy limit. So the levies are supporting what the expenditures are in the budget. The budget as it stands now does not have any of the utilization of that municipal aid built into the budget, which is a revenue. And it's an, it's an annual revenue. So it's not like anytime, like, one-time money like ARPA or FEMA. So if, when you utilize, if we choose to utilize that shared revenue, which, you know, we're gonna be getting it. So it's just a matter of how we want to utilize it, right? So it would reduce any of the, the levies in, depending on how you used it, but it would be used to reduce those levies. Because now, instead of funding an expenditure, say you want to fund expenditure with utilization of that supplemental aid, that's currently being funded with tax levy. You utilize that municipal aid and obviously then the tax levy would go down. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and on the, so you threw out some options for us and you were short, like, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Well, it's more, but anyway. What, did you have like a, a plan for that additional money? Like, does that go into reserves or we can use all of the nine hundred and three thousand dollars and put it towards?
Right, yeah, the supplemental aid is, you know, we get shared revenue right now of approximately three point nine million dollars, which goes to support, you know, the operations. You know, and obviously through Act twelve, they gave us an additional shared revenue. Probably the first time since I've been here. So it's, it's additional shared revenue. They did attach some strings to it. You know, obviously it can only be used for police, fire, public works and things like that. So, you know, so it has to be used for some specific purposes, but those three categories are a large part of our budget. So I don't think there's an issue with finding ways to utilize it.
And if we do utilize it, would that change the option one of reducing those budgets by six point nine five percent?
Right.
Okay, great. I'm, I'm done for right now. Thank you.
So I was thinking about this the other days. We're at like two point nine million and payment for the debt servicing the debt. Is that correct, somewhere in there? Two point nine, is that it?
Yeah.
Okay.
The debt service.
Close enough. Yeah, and so if, if we were to, you know, work really, really hard over time and all that debt went away, that two point nine million or whatever it would be at that time, that would go away too because that's specifically for, like, we're allowed to raise the levy to raise that two point nine million in order to service our debt.
Right.
So that, that two point nine would, would also go away, like, that would come off the, we wouldn't be gaining anything. We wouldn't be gaining two point nine million.
Yeah, the adjustment you make in the levy limits, you, you know, it's an adjustment. So when your debt service goes away, you don't have that adjustment. So it's not like if you phase out the debt, it's not like that the amount you're levying for debt service now becomes available for other things.
Right.
It won't.
So it doesn't, it's gone.
Right.
So there, yeah, so, okay. I mean, it, it helps me because I, to wrap my mind around this, like, I mean, I, I think I've been pretty clear over the years. I would like to be able to do this. And then, you know, our awesome mayor put me in charge of the finance and property committee, or everybody did, you know? So I've been getting my lessons learned pretty quick here. And I don't, I don't know. You know, I asked the first time I was, I was sitting there during the budget process. I said, how do we know what their budgets are, like, all the individual budgets? And in the end, the answer is clearly, we don't really know. We have to trust the department heads to do their job and come up with a budget that, that they see as, as what they need. And that increases every year and then special projects or special purchases, you know, make that even more for that year. Unless you're willing to, and, and our job is not to micromanage. So I just kind of, you know, I kind of sit back and watch what's happening and, and, and have to assume that these guys are doing a great job. The department heads are doing a great job. So, so how do we figure out what is inside each budget in order to be able to say, we don't need this, we don't need that? Otherwise, we're sitting here, I understand what you're saying. If we're gonna cut something, cut now. Well, we tried that and we all stuck our foot in it. No offense, Catherine. But you're the, I mean, Ryan made a good point. We're, we, we went out, you know, we didn't go after the library. We see where there, in our opinion, there's over, overage, but it didn't pass anyway, like, nothing happened. So, so we also not only have to feel the way we feel, but we also have to get five people to feel the way we feel to be able to make any movement on shrinking a budget that's continuously growing. Certainly helps that we have extra nine hundred thousand dollars to work with now. So I, I, I don't necessarily want to just ramble, but I think my, my point is saying it's, it's just not super easy unless we can get inside and micro, not micromanage, but go through each budget and figure out if there are things that can be taken or something that we can change. Or we like, look at government differently in order to say, we have to do things different in order to fund them different. Like, right now, we just keep saying, this is it. This is what we have and this is what it costs to run that. And we don't, we don't really know any different. And it's, I, I, I know that I can't sit here and say, cut that, slash that, get rid of that program, fire that person or whatever, remove that position, like, I don't, I don't see how it happens. So we end up in the same position of take out the debt for the roads. And hopefully, like, how, I mean, we're lucky to have the nine because of all the stuff we agreed to throughout the year that, that we were like, yeah, I think we should do that because they're asking for it. So if they're asking for it, it must be important. But we don't really know. We make the decisions, you know, one decision at a time. And yeah, I kick myself all the time for the votes that I make that I don't necessarily always agree with, but that's what we're working towards. So we have the nine to offset some of the new stuff and then we take the rest of the nine to put towards the road to lower our debt. And then it looks like we're, I mean, in my opinion, we're taking out debt for the rest of the roads right now anyways because I don't know how to get around it. Thank you.
Your Honor.
Yeah, and I don't know, one of you guys made, made the point that our largest by far expense is bodies. And, and Matt and I go around all the time. It's really about, you know, our, us council have to decide what services and what level of services we want to provide to the community. Because ultimately, we cut a service, it's you and me that are getting the phone call. And is that a necessary service or not? That'll be the question. But the only way you're gonna make sweeping changes to the budget is eliminating bodies. Otherwise, honestly, I hate to use the word, but it's nickels and dimes and it's not gonna amount to add. It's not gonna add up to much. So, you know, this year alone, it's been four firefighters in the last year, two years. You know, we have two, a, a position and a quarter kind of at the PD. So we're adding to it and we're talking about a grant for three more positions that you have to figure out how to fund in three years on top of it. And that's never been discussed, but council will worry about it in three years. And, but that's all expense, you know, those three, each, each entry level law enforcement firefighter, it's a hundred thousand dollars. And if you're trying to talk one point nine million, and, and I'll take out the millions of dollars for the pool and the millions of dollars for the riverfront that are honored that. We're also, you know, we have bonding out for water and light because they can't bond, so we bond for them. And it, that's a whole nother thing. But Tim said it over and over, if you take out all those debts, our road construction debt really isn't that much in the overall debt package that we have. And, and you heard it tonight, you know, within the next couple of years, probably two million dollars for a fire truck. That's gonna have to be borrowed or that money's gonna have to come from somewhere. But I, you know, I, I think, you know, you go, I've seen it in the past where councils have, oh, why do we spend so much on this phone? You know, and it, because that's the phone cost, you know? It's not like you can go negotiate, I want a cheaper phone bill. And so that's the struggle here. And you're not gonna make any big changes unless you eliminate services. And you can go through and see, you know, I, I really believe that, um, department heads are coming in with responsible budgets to provide the services that we as a community have established are the services we're gonna provide. Get rid of the compost site and save, save less than a hundred thousand. It's really not gonna amount to closing that debt. You have to make big changes. And big changes aren't, aren't something I don't think any council's comfortably doing, saying, okay, we don't need this X, Y, Z department anymore. And guess what? Our, our roads won't get plowed during the winter because we don't have people to plow the roads because we got rid of them all. I, I think, I think fortunately, we received additional shared revenue. And we have FEMA money and we have ARPA money and we have a transportation utility, a stormwater utility. And, and we do have the ability to bond. And if we, if, if levy limits weren't in place and bonding, bonding wouldn't even be a discussion because it would just be built into our levy to pay for our streets that way. And, and like Matt and I've talked, you know, that's government or state, state requires us to have levy limits, but they don't have levy limits. You know, they put these restrictions on us and not on themselves. And it's not fair, but they gave, unfortunately, they gave communities an out to barely use bonding as a revenue source. And yeah, we pay interest, we pay very low interest luckily, but it, it allows us to still provide the services in what I think is, I struggle with the community and lack of growth. You know, when we can only raise our levy limit, what, forty-two, forty-three thousand dollars, it doesn't even probably cover nothing. Doesn't even cover flock cameras and tasers. And that's what we, because of our net new construction so low. And that's the struggle we have in our community. But the only way you're gonna make any sweeping changes to the budget is eliminating services and the people associated with them. Otherwise, realistically, we can do the song and dance, but borrowing will have to be a part of our option here. And I think it's really about what level you want to do that. And then what you want to do, how you want to fund with the extra money there, you know, towards roads and things like that. Thank you.
Yeah, and you mentioned the, and, excuse me, Matt has mentioned the past, you know, just tonight again. And I, we've talked, Matt and I have talked about micromanaging and macro managing and going over these, but, you know, going, micromanaging these departments. But I'm not gonna, in a budget meeting, gonna discuss the price of, um, ten new chairs for an office. But when you start immediately trusting that a two million dollar fire truck and not looking at a used or another option somewhere on the planet is just not possible. And it's, we have to micromanage that. We can't, I mean, if one person says, uh, a used fire truck is junk, yet we're trying to borrow everything, we're basically, are talking two million dollars for something we may be able to find us for significantly less. And, um, you know, we've gone thirty years with the truck as it is. And so we don't know what, putting money into it at this point, I get it. But at some point, where, what is the definition of micromanaging? What do we look at and say, this is crazy, you know? We gotta, we need a fire truck, granted. But I, I will not support spending that kind of money on a truck. I don't care if we, how we make the payments and everything without at least looking into potential opportunities to find a used truck or something with less miles on it, something to that effect. I just say, this micromanaging part, I agree with Matt. When do we call it micro and when is it macro managing? But the point is, is I guess that's our job, so. Patrick.
Okay, say that we were able to reduce the debt and we also wanted to, we got down to a certain point. I just want to know where exactly that point is where it wouldn't really be a good idea to take out a, a bond because it would cost more to take out the bond than what, what was taken out. Because there's bond fees. So I'm saying like, if we got down to a hundred thousand dollars, would it be worth even taking the hundred thousand dollars out?
Well, you know, it, you know, there, you know, as far as like, you know, it gets to, the size of the issue isn't worth going through the, the issuance costs, getting a Moody's rating, having a financial advisor, bond, bond attorneys. You know, there, there's a point where you can go to the state trust fund loan and it's, it's through the state of Wisconsin. And they have higher interest rates, but there's no issuance fee. So there's really that, all depending on the, the size of the issue. So, you know, if we ever got that to where, you know, it was like below a million dollars, I would sit there and cross that out and determine if it's, you know, because usually it's higher than what if you go through a competitive bid process? But, you know, there's a, there's a, there's an inflection point where it doesn't pay to go through the competitive bid. But, you know, there's a, there's a, there's an inflection point where it doesn't pay to go through the competitive bid process because the issuance costs would exceed, you know, the additional interest on that debt, so.
So, it's right around a million dollars?
I, at this point, I, I'm just saying, if it got there, that's where I start looking at it. But I, I do go through and look at what the state trust fund loan is and look at those rates and what our estimate is and kind of, you know, amortize it out to determine that which is the better way to go even with issuance costs.
And, and the benefit of the interest that goes to school or to libraries, the interest payments helps fund libraries.
Okay.
School libraries, school libraries.
So, with your, with your first one, you did 2.5% for wage increase for next year, and it's obviously at three.
Yep.
And we've, may or may not have added some other costs since you had first put this budget together. Could you tell me what the amount is today, like?
That's my, this is my current project I'm working on.
Oh, okay.
Well, because with the new wage scale, I, you know, all my Excel spreadsheets are based on the old wage scales, so I gotta put together new wage scales, you know, in, in that Excel spreadsheet, recalculate for all the departments, what their new wages and benefits are based on the, the, the new wage scale that was approved on Tuesday and also the 3%. So, that's what I'm working on right now.
Okay, and say we just, this is my last question, and I, I think that'll, that'll be it. So, every year, we bond four roads, because that's what you can bond for. What if we decided to use, because you can use your nine hundred, three thousand dollars for construction projects? What if we said we're going to do these three that add up to nine hundred thousand dollars? And then we end up with, with what, like, a million dollars? Like, do you know what I'm saying? Like, if, if that's what the council decides, that, hey, we're going to put this towards that?
Okay, so, you got about 1.8 million dollars in projects, right? Is that what you're saying? And if we said, okay, we're going to take the supplemental aid, because you can use it for transportation and public works, and we're going to put it towards, towards that, so then, okay, so now you're at nine hundred thousand, right? So, then, you're saying, then what would you do with that nine hundred thousand, or we're just not going to do those projects?
I'm saying, can you still get a, can you still fund those projects and the other things that we are funding? Because, because you take out the bond for the?
The nine hundred thousand, right.
No, I'm saying, you, when you bond, you bond for the roads.
Right.
So, if we allocate it towards the roads, you're shrinking that down, so you can't bond for the roads if you don't have road projects that's already paid for.
Right.
So, it wouldn't be a good idea to take that nine hundred thousand dollars and allocate it solely towards the roads.
Well, I mean, you can do that and say, we're going to do that, and it's like, okay, so now we have nine hundred thousand that we would borrow for the, the residual? Is that what you're saying?
Well, we're still going to be over that night, extra nine hundred thousand dollars is what I'm saying.
Right.
Yeah, so we would end up short. Would we be able to bond for that?
The residual?
Not the additional, because we're at probably around.
Well, I, I guess I would, I would never, you know, advocate, you know, borrowing for annual operate, you know, operations. Usually, you borrow for capital, and that's why the road constructions are carved out for. When we, when we issue debt, they're funded with debt because it's a capital project. And there's something called the intergenerational equity principle, where, you know, for long-term capital assets, you know, when you borrow for those, the, the, the people that are going to benefit from that are going to pay for it over time. So, and that's what's called intergenerational equity principle, but it's kind of like, that's why, you know, it's come with the premise that you use, when you use debt for long-term projects, that the people that will utilize that facility or road or whatever are the ones that are paying over, over the life of that asset.
Could the new positions that were, sorry, I actually had, um, um, so the new law enforcement positions, that, that could be all paid for with that? And additional law enforcement, which would take down the?
With the supplemental aid?
Yeah.
Right, so, you know, I kind of listed some of the, the items in there, and for the supplemental aid, obviously, the new administrative lieutenant in the police department. The ordinance officer is, is kind of offset by the savings in the, that we don't have the code enforcement budget right now. But obviously, the, the contractual wage increases in the Boston Police and Fire Department could be used, the supplemental aid could be used to fund those. Some of the, it could be used for some of the, in the public works construction fund, we have concrete pavement patch and joint sealing, it could be used for that. That's currently supported by the levy. You know, I try, I tried to look at stuff that was for increases, that we're using that for, not just, you know, ones that are, you know, were supported before with the, you know, levy or other revenues.
Doesn't have to be for increases, though.
Um, I would advocate, you know, so right now, there's no reporting, you know, there's some, you know, they, they say, you know, in the Act 12, they said it had to be used for this. Currently, in that act, there is no formal reporting mechanism to department revenue of how you spent that money. And so, it's kind of unclear, at least at this time. So, it's kind of unclear, and it's like, you know, and I know when this first came out, it says, well, that's to be used for police and fire. Well, why couldn't you just use what you, you know, what fire was, with levy, you know, last year? Well, we'll just substitute this in, and then we'll use that levy money to fund something else, you know, kind of the shell game, you know, allocation of that. So, without knowing, I mean, obviously, we have plenty of increases in this budget that, you know, I think we can, you know, I prefer that we use it for actual increases and document that, okay, we had an increase in this category. That's what the supplemental aid was allocated towards, and so, that's just my opinion because there's really, you know, no real guidance on it. But also, also remember that in Act 12, with the supplemental aid, there was another string attached that we have a maintenance effort for police and fire. So, we got this money, but now they have these maintenance of efforts that you have to show that you're maintaining this effort each year. Otherwise, if you don't, you lose 15% of your shared revenue, which is a significant amount of money, so, obviously. Luckily for police is that populations of 20,000 or less are exempted from that maintenance of effort. However, for fire, that same exemption is not included. So, we have four categories. There's four maintenance of efforts categories for fire each year that we have, we will be reporting to the state of Wisconsin on. You know, one is maintaining staffing levels, maintaining expenditure levels, maintaining response call levels, and maintaining training and certification levels. Now, each year, you have to meet two of the four. And from year to year, you don't, you can interswitch which ones that is. So, but once again, they haven't issued really any specific guidance on what that means, you know, because when they write this legislation, they put this stuff in here, and then the department revenue has to interpret what it means. And so, they're working on coming up with what the actual interpretation, because take the expenditure one. You have operating expenditures, right, which are fairly consistent from year to year, and you have outlay, which can vary. Well, when you say you have to maintain the same amount of expenditures, and say you just bought a new ambulance for $350,000, well, obviously, the next year, you're not going to have that expenditure. Well, you're not going to meet that. You'll, you'll probably, your expenditures will be left if it includes outlay. Now, back in 2009, 2010, we had a similar maintenance of effort for both police and fire, and their expenditures excluded capital one-time purchases, but we don't know what that's going to be yet. Also, on the staffing, it says employed, so we don't know if that means budgeted positions, allocated positions, or actual firefighters employed. Well, we all know that we have turnover, and sometimes it takes a long time. And there's, you know, there's obviously an issue with recruiting people, firefighters, and so, we don't know what that means. It's like, yeah, we could say we have these many allocated positions, but we, they might not be filled because we can't find anyone. So, there's a lot of gray area right now that we're hoping to receive some guidance from the department of revenue and so that we know how to manage this, because obviously, it's going to be very important that we manage this because we're not going to want to lose, it's not 15% of the 900,000. It's 15% of the 900,000 plus the 3.9 we get now. So, it's a significant penalty.
He's not next anyway, so go ahead.
Okay, so, I'm sorry. Is that why you put the, the Lowell Construction, Public Works Construction Fund in there? That, down at the bottom of the, the $250,000 project? Okay, that's what that was.
Right, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Ryan, then Tom, then Jake.
All right, I hope everybody's been listening to what Mayor Blair, Blazer's been kind of preaching here. He said it a couple of times, right? So, in my opinion, we should definitely be utilizing the shared revenue this year. And as far as ARPA and FEMA are concerned, we should be using those this year as well to limit the amount of bonding that we're going to do. That means the, the pole building for the, the public works. I, I mean, I think that's a little bit more of a wish than a need at this point in time, and I think we need to take, take, you know, what we're doing in bonding a little more seriously. So, that would be my recommendation. And to better utilize the storm utility and the transportation utility, those are two things that, number one, storm is, is underfunded, and transportation utility is, is something that isn't getting the funding that it even, that it should be creating now, and we should be looking at increasing that potentially. And Jake, I'm going to disagree with you. We've seen four department, departmental budgets. One of them has had a significant decrease at the library. And I think a part of that is because we, as a council, have put the fear of God in the, in the library. And I'm wondering if maybe we shouldn't do the same thing to the rest of the departments, because maybe they'll take things a little more seriously as well. So, thank you.
Tom.
For the most part, I agree with you, Ryan. I, I guess I've just, I wasn't going to, but I'll start with, there was a meeting I was at last night at the library, actually, with, what was going on, and after it was over, stayed around, talked with a few people and a couple elderly ladies, elderly, I'm up in that category too, is that they already had been told, or were the rumors already out that the library is to take cuts. And I said, where did that come from? And, well, it's somewhere there. And so, I tried to put some peace in their minds about it, but, so hopefully, I did. But, you know, it's how we, how things get going is crazy, but, you know, I don't know, Ryan, if the, put the fear of God into everybody is the way to do it, because, again, what, what do you cut by it? If, if there's logical cuts that can be made, that's one thing, but the mayor, I think, is hitting on, you know, there's a big thing. We had to decide, I guess, to go back. We can take care of the, what the budget is if we say how we want to spend this extra money that we basically, and what we want to borrow. And do we want to or don't? And if we don't borrow, what do we do? Where does that put us? And along with it, it's just, do we want to cut services? Do we want to cut police, fire, snow plowing? Instead of plowing snow after every, after snow event, let's wait two days and do it. It's just, unfortunately, things cost money, and they cost money, more money every year. And, and tell somebody, somebody has to come up and say, this is what I'm proposing. Not just cut, 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 let's hear what the proposal is to cut. And that probably basically lays on our shoulders. The budget has been presented. Now, what we don't like, then it's, we have to say, exit out, or how can we pay for it? I guess you can ask the department's head, do you really need this? Yeah, you can. I've sat through, I don't know how many meetings now we've had with, for this, and we haven't accomplished, as far as that goes, anything. And yes, it's going to be, if this continues, it will be a last-minute special meeting or something to try to resolve the issue. How, how are, are we going to use that money? That's up to us, with advice from staff, because that's their, their expertise. Now, it's easy to say about running a balanced budget. And obviously, I think you have to keep things in perspective of what the budget or borrowing is. You can't, you know, not just say, I want to borrow, yeah, 20 million dollars, and expect that to fly. But in reality, we have a process, we have this of what we have. And it's either we make cuts that staff says they can't do, and we say, well, let's get rid of a patrol officer, or two firefighters. And that we don't want to spend 2 million dollars on a fire truck. I was here when that was done 30 years ago, and the same complaints were made then. About used, dilapidated, we wanted to get up into the real world of having a ladder truck. So, do you want to have a ladder truck or not? There'd be maybe laws by the state that we have to have some type of, what we have to have some type of. But if you don't want to have that level of service, then say so. I'm very proud that we got that ladder truck. It's served the community very well. But even in our, in our own homes, after 30 years, if we live there, and my house is 60 years old, you put money back into it. To extend the longevity of it, to change the looks of it. Hopefully, that's worth more, so when it does come time to put on the market, you can get more money for it, too. Because if you don't, you won't get that more money for it. As far as I'm concerned, I think the meetings we have had here, we got information, I can't deny that. But that hasn't accomplished anything of us saying to cut. We've asked some questions. But the bottom line, there's that money there. Do we want, do we want to use that, and how do we want to use it? Or don't we want to use it? And that's probably what one meeting should be for. Because at some point in time, we're going to have to decide how to do that. There's not going to be, through a few, few more meetings, nickel and diming if anything gets cut. It's still going to come down to what do we do with that money that's there to cover it, unless somebody pulls something gigantic out of that budget. So, in reality, what we have, if we like it or not, somehow, we have to cover that 1.8 million. Or enough people have to come up and say, and vote at a certain time, and vote no. To, but they have to propose what they want cut, not just, we ain't going to do it. Propose what they're going to take out. That's the hard part. They didn't say, we'll cut a million off of 1.8, but somewhere that, that million dollars goes away. But it's a frustrating thing for me to sit through these. I even said at the start of this, that we could've done more of these in a few nights than stretch them out. And other than that, we're getting stretched out over the departments have come and gone tonight. We could've. We could've had several departments in a night and been done. As the saying goes, it takes money to buy whiskey. Now, if you wanna give up drinking, you don't have to spend money on the whiskey. But if you want to, you have to spend the money. So it's down to what do we wanna do? It's in our hands. The budget is there. We, if we want to, we have to point out what to cut. We, yeah, we can ask, is this needed, and that type of stuff? Well, they've probably, and I think the mayor has said, has pretty much got, for the most part, it's a pretty, that they've strimed it bare-boned as they see they can do. Now, if we think we can do better, we have to say, this is what you can do better. So if that's, with the majority, if there's enough, majority here that wants to eliminate enough money, bring it up. If you wanna eliminate jobs, bring it up. Services, bring it up. And when it gets time to buy a new fire truck, yeah, you can look at it, and it's worthwhile to look at, to get estimates on it, one night. Maybe, maybe you could get lucky to buy something that's good, used half-price or something like that, but to start with, you gotta look at what you want. Now, if you don't want this on there, and that on there, and that on there, say, don't put on that truck. Take stuff off that truck. Start reducing that $2 million to maybe 1.5, and still get a new truck. What do you get for that one and a half? That you, that you lost to that half million you cut out? Might save somebody's life down the road. So that, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna shut up, because it's just, we this has been presented to us. It's called the mayor's budget, but it's, it's here. If we don't like something, we have to say what? Because we voted on this in the end. But it takes the majority to eliminate. And so that has to be done. And as I see, my guess would be, is that maybe there's, as Ryan said, to put the fear of God into whatever, to these, that maybe something would happen in the future, but and if that's the route you wanna go now, you can come back with that, I guess, to threaten somebody with cuts. And we saw how that flew around the community last year with the library. The ball's in our court. So if there are those that want to cut or project cuts, get together, or maybe on your own, and see if there's enough to go with you on it. Bring the specifics forward. Otherwise, I think we got, as it is, we gotta look at that extra money that we got, ARPA, FEMA, and are we gonna use that and how we're gonna use it? And those things. And the water utility and that to look at. But if the intent is to eliminate, that's what we gotta hear. We gotta hear what to cut. And yes, as the library, just to use her an example, has been looking at, and has. Hopefully, you know, it doesn't come to the point that you cut too far to get something passed. Because they keep operating, you can't cut, 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 and get to zero, and have something left. So if somebody thinks they have a reason of what, reasonable thing or whatever to attack this with, let me know.
And Jake and then Matt?
Alright.
Jake and then Matt.
So I do, Tom, I understand you're for bonding this year, then. I think that was the general question, essentially, that was posed to us. What we're gonna do with this budget. And I, we're going down some rabbit holes here about how to answer that. I wanna go over some things. I'm gonna say first and answer the question and not go down any rabbit holes. I think we need to bond this year because of where we're at, as we have in previous years. Now, I'm on the first part of my term, but next year, we, if, if the council in April, whatever it may be, decides we should do this again, and decide whether we wanna balance budget or whether we wanna be here next year in this situation. If we wanna balance budget, we work towards that all year. We don't have to show up to committee meetings and approve, approve, approve. We put ourselves in a situation this year where we're unable to balance the budget because of the things we've done. So we'll all have to be cognizant of that. I think, we have to bond this year, and we need to figure out who's interested on this council in bonding for all, and when I mentioned the four budgets that were presented to us, I didn't, I didn't say they came over. But we've had four and no proposed cuts. So what I'm feeling and hearing is that we're not proposing cuts, we're not proposing to get to a balanced budget. Which I think we should, because, Tim, I'm looking at your tax analysis. This, this one? Our 2024 budget is $16,465,626, right?
That's what, that's what the current levy is standing at.
So it's the statutory tax limit is $14,340,000. For a difference of $2,431,226. Right? So, that's, I'm not gonna send a message directly to department heads, but I think to the public as well, whenever this gets taken up, it can go by year by year, and we can bond. But at some point, if the environment changes, or an emergency comes up, I, I looked at the interest. It looks like we're paying 1.1 million of that in just interest this year. Just interest. 1.1 out of the numbers I just read. We're, we're over. And so, I appreciate, I appreciate the budgets being presented and but if we weren't a municipality that was allowed to borrow, if we ever got close to the debt limit, which is in the budget, and you could see that Tim can speak to what the state is, we would be in some trouble. And I, I think when we come in here and, and department heads get upset, other, all the people get upset. Citizens get upset when we talk about bringing down spending, and rightfully so, because it does mean services, it does mean jobs. It does have to happen at some point. We can say we're bonding for the roads, but that's just to make our budget big enough to be able to afford doing the roads. If, if we had a proper budget, we wouldn't have to bond for roads, and we wouldn't. There's a bunch of different reasons why we've added up to what we pay in interest and where we're at. But I think we, we need to get a we need to get a here tonight from everyone on, on whether the budgets proposed are close to what we're gonna move forward with, with some changes, and we're going to bond, because that's what, that's what we'll have to do. Or if we're gonna throw them out, and we're gonna adjust to make cuts to balance the budget, I wouldn't be opposed to that. I think it's a tall task at this point in time. And I, I believe that we should take that up over the next year. Otherwise, Tom's right, and others have said it, we gotta point out specifically. And, and we need, we need to be clear on this, too. I, I mean, this is, everybody dances around this, but we're talking about letting people go. That's, that's the cost. That's the service, when service is a reference, we're talking about letting people go that are employed by the city. So I don't think we should be, we can't be afraid to talk about that in our positions. It, just like a CEO or a board of a company couldn't be afraid of it. Nobody wants to do it, but when we're, we're talking one way, that we want it to be this way, but we never bring up that the only way to get there is to fire people. It, it, we're, we're sliding in between and not addressing the real thing. So, I don't, I'm not in favor of firing anyone. I'm just gonna call it that instead of talking about getting to the budget at this point in time in the year. But I think we do need to take a serious look at it next year. And if that's putting the fear of God in departments that we talk about, or was mentioned, we don't talk about it, I swear. But we, we really need to get there. I mean, and at, at the very least, we need to get to a point where budgets come in front of us. I know they already do in their perspective, but with a sharper pencil, and doing what the library did, and at least coming down year over year, so we can have a clear picture on where this city's gonna be down the road. Because I plan on living here a long time. You look at the, the life of how this is operating, and costs are gonna go up, and then you look at numbers like the new construction cost. What council takes this on in the future? Where they, they're facing the question of who we're gonna let go, and what areas we're gonna let go? Because it's, it's probably gonna happen unless something comes and, and we get a whole new outlook on what the state brings down, or something gigantic comes here and the whole city changes, so I would, I, I don't know if it's appropriate for me to take a straw poll, if everybody wants to go around, but the question is, are we gonna bond this year and keep hearing these department budgets as they are? Or are we gonna balance it? And I'm gonna say, we'll bond this year, and we work next year to try to balance it.
Matt?
Um, just to address a few things, as, before I get to my points. I mean, if we do let go at $2 million, I mean, I always average it at like $2 million is what we seem to bond for. That, at roughly $100,000 per person, give or take, that's, that's twenty people. Yeah. So, there's a few other things, but I'm gonna let those go. So, Tim, we, I know we were talking 108, 1.8 million for the roads. Right? And then 600,000 for the operations for, you know, I know it's not just operations, but it was $600,000 over for the operations budget, which brought us to the 2.4 million that we were talking about. And now we'd be looking at, I, I believe, as long as all of our contracts go through and those stay the same, or, you know, relatively speaking. We did just go up because of the new wages that, are we looking at for this budget cycle, just ballpark, like 150, 300,000 are going up, or some, somewhere in between?
I would say probably about 170,000.
170,000, okay.
Don't hold me to that, I have not done the calculation.
Alright, so that puts us really 2.4 million to oh, I'm just not quick enough. 2.6, 2.5, 7? Alright. So Mayor Blazer, you brought up a few things. Stormwater. Is there, is there a number that we can work off of for the stormwater, Tim? That we can work towards funding the stormwater repair on the mile of road that we do to take that?
Yeah, right now, the, the stormwater utility funds about 150,000 of stormwater sewer constructions in, in this budget. Or, man, I think it's, I'm sorry, it's 175,500. About three, a little over 300,000 would be supported by, is, is built into that levy figure, or built into those, that 1.8 billion dollars. So basically, you know, a 1% increase in your stormwater utility fee raises about $10,000. So
So we'd, to make any kind of significant impact, it would have to be like?
You know, and I've talked about this in the past. You know, about you know, the, you know, the amount, you know, how roads are being funded through, obviously, the issuance of, of GO notes. You know, and what you have to understand is, is like governmental accounting, debt proceeds are considered a revenue. So that's why it shows up on the revenue side of the budget. It's not like commercial, private accounting. You know, governmental accounting's a little bit different. But I kinda lost my train of thought there after I got up there, but
It's getting late.
Oh, well, yeah. So, but, you know, to me, you, you have a mechanism in place. You know, there, there's a, there's a, there's a lot of mechanisms in place as far as, you know, stormwater utility, transportation utility fee. I know, like, when we did the transportation utility fee, we looked at, okay, what would that fee be if we funded $2 million of roads with that? You know, and I think for the residential, it wasn't that significant, just because their trips are low. You know, and then obviously, then there, you know, there would be an offset over time as your debt service tax rate went down to fund that. But the problem was, was some of the small businesses that really were impacted, and just, it, you know, it wasn't something that, you know, this, this council felt is that, you know, we can't implement something like this, and then hand them overnight, you know, and, you know, increased expenditure like that. But, you know, between those two mechanisms, plus, obviously, as, you know, as we go throughout the year, and requests come to you for new staffing, for replacement of staffing, that's the time to really do the due diligence and look at these things. I mean, I, Jane, you, you know, you, you can probably vouch for this, is that I've always said that when you have an open position, there should be an analysis done to see if, you know, is there something we can do in changing things around? Not necessarily like a reorganization, but maybe redistribution of duties or things like that. See that, hey, maybe we can absorb not replacing that position. But that being said, and Tom, you, you've been here long enough. A lot of these departments have reduced personnel over time. I mean, I think the, the street department was at 65? 75, yeah, Jake? And they're down to 45? You know, and those are the things that have occurred over time. I'll, I'll take the finance department. We had five and a half employees, we're down to or five and three quarters, and we're down to 4.15. You know, that may not sound a lot, but when you start with just, just less than six employees, reducing those positions, that's significant for a small department. So, you know, there are departments that have been looking at, when vacancies come out, how do we, how can we do this? You know, there's, you know, technology improves things. You know, it's, you know, I always say that, you know, sometimes, over the years, we get in the cookie cutter approach. You know, where like, well, we have this position, it's vacant, well, we gotta fill it, without really doing that due diligence. And I think that's where departments sometimes need to be challenged, saying, hey, is, is there a way you can do things? Because obviously, we would rather, you know, if we're gonna be reducing expenditures, you'd rather do it through not filling a vacant position as opposed to laying someone off. And so, that, this is my two cents for that. But going back to, I kinda got off track there, with these fees, expenditure reductions, you know, obviously, no one wants to issue debt if you don't have to, right? And obviously, we're in a position where this has been structurally built into the budget for going back to when I got here, they were borrowing on annual basis for, for roads and streets. Levee limits kinda took that, one of those mechanisms away where, you know, we were, we'd be able to use the tax levy to maybe phase that out over time. You know, but then if we would've done that, and it was built into the tax levy, we wouldn't be having this discussion, would we? It'd be like, okay, it's built into the tax rate, we'd have a higher tax rate, obviously. But also look at, when you look at your debt, and you look at what, you know, for But also look at, when you look at your debt and you look at what, you know, for, let me pull up a spreadsheet here. Um, you know, what's allocated to streets. So what we've borrowed, you know, throughout the years for streets, you know, we have outstanding debt of twenty-four million, eighty-five thousand dollars. The amount that, of that, that's alloc- that's attributed to streets is seven million, nine hundred and eighty-two thousand. So if we didn't do all, a lot of these other big projects, you know, outstanding debt would be seven, just roughly eight million dollars for roads. You know, and obviously each year we're paying down on that, a principal payment of one million, nine hundred and sixty, ninety-six thousand, that's built into that service tax rate, right? Well, if we would've built into levy and we were allowed to years ago, really, you're, whether you call it debt service levy or you call it, we're just levying it on an annual basis, that million dollars would be there regardless if we were borrowing or not. If we would've baked, built it into the tax levy years ago, but levy limits, didn't do that. The interest that, it was really, it's the interest, right? You know, and so the, the interest for, for roads is two hundred and seventy-one thousand. Now, that's not a small amount. But, you know, it, it, it's not a huge, you know, when you spread that out amongst all the assessed value, i- it's not a real, real big number compared to the budget as all. You know, taken as a whole. So, but, you know, I think it's one of those things that, yeah, I mean, cutting two point four million dollars of the budget or one point eight, or whatever that be, yeah, you're, you're looking at a lot of positions, but you, you could be looking at, you know, there might be departments that, you know, the, the work still has to be done in a lot of respects. And, you know, and you start reducing that. I mean, obviously, now if, if we have maintenance of effort for like the fire department and stuff, you know, are you really gonna be able to reduce there? I mean, are you gonna reduce, you know, I've heard with the, the police department, you know, that, you know, they haven't increased their officers on the road since nineteen seventy. I mean, i- is it realistic to think that we're gonna take officers off the road? I don't know. That, it's, you know, and you, you look at the street department and all what they have to do. And it's like they've already reduced thirty positions over time. So, you know, and I'm not saying it can't be done. I, I'm just saying, you know, i- if it's the true goal to us that we wanna not borrow for the streets, I, I, I really believe, and I, I've talked about this over, over the years that I've been here, is that, well, then we need to look at ways that we can, over a period of time, reduce that and have a target of like, okay, you know, each year, we're gonna do X, Y, and Z. And reduce it, and reduce it. And, and I think the real, realistic way to do that is over, you know, a number of years. And so we're that, we're working towards a goal. We have a plan in place, you know, whether it's through, you know, a combination of transportation utility, stormwater utility, you know, expenditure reductions, not, maybe not filling positions, and then work that and saying, okay, that we're headed in the right direction. That's just my kinda two cents on it.
Jane?
Yeah, and Tim kind of explained it all. That, that sharp pencil is now dull, cause I, I hate to say, you're late to the game. You know, so much has been cut over the years, it is down to bare bones and literally you have to cut services and people. There, there's no extra fluff. Cause Tom, this city hall used to be packed with people and people have combined jobs, technology have taken over. And, and it's helped to reduce those costs. But, yeah, well, our street departments have the size and they're still trying to, thankfully, equipment and technology has helped close that gap. But those sharp pencils are already becoming dull because there have been so many cuts through, mainly through attrition over the years. And, and I look at, and I think Matt and I were talking about this the other day, is you go up to Marshfield and you look at their budget. They're borrowing for squad cars, they're borrowing, borrowing for equipment. We set up depreciation account. And the problem with setting up depreciation account, where Marshville doesn't have this issue, is that, that, those, those monies in those depreciation accounts that we use to buy this equipment and cars, instead of borrowing it, is being tied up. There's, is part of their working capital that they have to bail using their budget and they just borrow for it. And so I think thankfully, over the years, Tim and councils have established these, in, in the past, previous mayors have rated it. So, hey, we won't raise taxes, we'll just take all these funds and we'll worry about that down the road. Well, I think we're set up in a pretty good position on, especially on vehicles and end loaders and all these other pieces, bigger piece of equipment through our rental rates that we're not going out and borrowing for these pieces of equipment, but we don't have that money in our budget for staff and, and all the other things. So I think the one point eight million dollars or the, I'm sorry, the, the money that we have established, that we have borrowed for roads, two hundred and some thousand in interest, well, where's the rest? It's in a pool. Yeah, there's all your interest, a lot of interest there, riverfront, there's interest in there. And all these, these pretty nice things that we've done throughout the years and borrowing and interest is, is what we're paying for. And the problem is with the pool, we all know is we, we're kind of in honeymoon years yet, but it's, it, the ball's gonna drop. But there's gonna be some big expenses in there at some point, cause it's not gonna last forever. And then where are we gonna pay for that? We need money to pay for those too. I, I just think, you know, council and the finance department over the years have put us in a good position with rental rates and depreciating out and saving these, these rainy day funds or the savings account. So we, we have that money there to pay for these things and we don't have to borrow them, borrow for them. Yes, we borrow, what is it, eight million dollars we're in debt for roads and in, in the grand scheme of things, that's not that much. Yeah, yeah, would it be nice to be zero? Absolutely. But i- i- our, our borrowing issues is not from roads. It's from the pretty things we like in the community that are costing us money. What about the library? All the pretty things? But, you know, so I, I, I agree with everybody here. It, you know, I, I feel bad Catherine's sitting here all night to wonder, even though she probably enjoys this stuff, is she's waiting, are we gonna cut another hundred thousand dollar budget? Because, you know, everybody has to go back then and figure out where that's gonna come from. And that's where, I think the whole intent of having these committee, the whole meetings were, hey, at the end of the night, okay, is this budget good or not? Yeah, you could take fifteen thousand out for flock cameras, but in the grand scheme of things, fifteen thousand out of over two million dollars, nickels and dimes. And it's sad, but it's nickels, fifteen thousand individually to all of us is a lot of money. But in the grand scheme of this budget here, it's, it's nickels and dimes. It's not gonna get us really that close to that, that money that we're looking for. And so then you have to weigh, it's like, hey, is the, the concept of a flock camera for fifteen thousand dollars? And if my kids abducted and they can use it, well, that fifteen thousand's worth it. Or, or a, a senior relative in my family is on a silver alert and, or they're off driving. Cause when I was an officer, there's a lot of times we were looking for seniors that have driven off and been found in the Dells and found all over. Well, if we had cameras then, maybe we would've known. Um, so it's really the trade-off. But, cause that fifteen thousand dollars isn't gonna solve our debt problem, but there's a reward to it. Thank you.
Um, yeah, in, in terms of, we can do the straw poll, we can talk about all that. But I still think that we have spread these meetings out. And one of the biggest budgets we're gonna talk about is Tuesday, we have public works on Tuesday. And, um, humane society and then W W L C and H R. And so, yeah, we can definitely do that. But we still have to look at their budgets. And I think that's the, the one thing about each individual department's heads coming in here and talking individually is they, they still have to justify their budget. And so we can talk about, um, the library and we can talk about, but we still have three more department heads, or four more actually, that are gonna come in and talk about their budgets next week. So, I mean, the bottom line is, is in the big picture, it sounds like we're gonna have to borrow, whether, you know, I think that, you know, it looks like we're gonna have to. I don't know if we can balance this budget. Um, again, I agree without, um, chopping heads. I mean, it's, and so, but we'd still have to justify, or give the, each individual department the opportunity to justify their budget and show where they've gotten. And everybody's done a real good job on that. But, so we can do a straw poll tonight, what we think about it. But that's, it's, it might change after we have the other budgets, so. That's all. Jake?
So, I'll start the straw poll. I am, I am in favor of borrowing. I, I, I do believe that we could apply some of the ARPA and some of the shared revenue to, to that borrowing. But just an observation from all the departments that have been here so far and the ones that are yet to come, there's a reoccurring theme in that theme is wages have gone up, fuel has gone up, health insurance has gone up. Um, I think Paul's gonna tell you that the price of vehicles has gone up forty percent and we're asking to cut. It's tough. It's a, I, I understand it's tough, but, I mean, they're kind of under the eight ball before they even get here. So, I am in favor of borrowing.
We'll just go around the room then.
I'm not in favor of borrowing, but as Tim had said, this isn't a one-year thing that we're going to be able to do. Um, I don't know if there's any way that we could, if we do formulate a plan with Tim. I mean, every council, they can do whatever they want. But, I mean, if we do go through the work of formulating a plan with him, if we could kinda pass it down to the next people year after year, I don't know how that would be done, but I do think that that would be worth it, that, uh, putting the time in and coming up with a, if it's a ten-year plan or a five-year plan, something like that. Um, but I, I'm also with Dean where he says that everybody should come in and justify what they're spending. I do like these meetings, not the time of year that they are. I would rather have it in February. But, um, I would, I, I'm getting a lot of information that I, you don't get just in regular council meetings. So, um, and there are gonna be cuts. I'm a hundred percent sure that there's gonna be cuts. I think that we should hear everybody out and then on one night, we should come together. Uh, Mr. Austin had said something about a pole building. I don't know the, the cost and stuff like that. But I'd, I'd be interested in hearing what he has to say about it. And if anybody else has any ideas, I'd be interested in that as well. I think that should be held out till after we've heard the, um, all the departments.
So, one and one, Dennis?
Well, I, I think the borrowing at this point sounds, uh, makes some sense. But, uh, Tim, uh, if we went to bond, to borrow, whether it's bonding or whatever, what stages does that take? I mean, now how long does it take to actually, uh, advertise for it? Uh, what type of interest do you think you would get on that? And, uh, basically what amount would you recommend that we would bond for? But how long would it take to actually get the money?
Well, usually, uh, we do our, we go out to the market, we do a competitive bid process. And usually that occurs anywhere from, uh, April to June. So it, basically what happens is, is that, you know, even though you approve the budget, we still have to bring a resolution back as part of that process that the council has to approve before we can move forward. So you, you, you basically, if we go our traditional route of competitive bid, um, that, that's, you have the initial borrowing resolution that, you know, it's passed by council. And then once that is passed, then our financial advisor, Ellers, will put together an official statement. You know, so I provide them with a lot of information. They put an official statement together and that's what's distributed. And then basically, then we have a credit rating. So basically Moody's Investor Service will get on the conference call with myself. And they ask me a zillion different financial questions. And then, you know, from that, then they determine what our credit rating is. And, you know, we have a very good credit rating as it stands. And then once that is complete, that credit rating report along with official statement, they, they, they solicit bids from interested parties that wanna buy our notes and/or bonds. And so, um, the underwriters basically bid on that and then we take the lowest in- interest rate. And then, then there's a bond closing or a note closing, and then that's when we receive the, the proceeds. And typically, since it's used for streets, you know, our, our construction starts, you know, depending on the weather, April, May. But a lot of our expenditures are in the back end of the summer because that's when, you know, the, the paving contract is, and the concrete is the largest portion. But we'll get those proceeds and then we pay those bills out of those proceeds along with, since we do our own construction, we cover the labor out of those proceeds.
Now, what would that do with the mill rate by borrowing, whatever amount? I think, uh, figures somewhere with about thirteen and a half.
Right. Well, obviously, it would have no, it would have no effect on this year, the, the mill rate, the twenty twenty-three, you know, well, I call it the twenty-four budget, cause I just, you know, there's always like the twenty-three payable and twenty-four. So the twenty-four mil, it doesn't affect that because you're not making any payments. It's the next year, when you start making the payments on that, then that gets folded into, to what your debt service tax rate is.
Okay. Thank you.
And then hopefully, usually as one comes on, you know, hopefully one comes off, but it all depends on, you know, what the nature is. Cause some of them, you know, we have different funding sources for. So if that comes off, that doesn't necessarily reduce your, your debt service, your debt service that you have to levy for because, but normally, typically, you know, wanna come up. Cause we, we do ten-year amortizations on this, so we, we really shorten up the amortization, cause you can go out to twenty years. But we usually typically do ten years so that, you know, we keep our interest, interest costs lower than as if we would borrow it over twenty years.
Jake, you had said you were...
Yeah, I, I believe we have to bond this year. And then I think it's important next year, not at budget time, but throughout the whole year and future years to work towards balance in every month's meeting and votes towards every finance committee, every H R position. We can do it that way. We, that's the way to do it. And Tim talked about over many years, uh, working through this. And I think that's becoming more of a, a consensus. Uh, so we bond this year and then we continue to work forward.
Tom? Matt?
Uh, I'm gonna put my tinfoil hat back on one more time tonight. And, uh, I just think we're, you know, looking at what's coming down the pipeline. I, I, I don't know how we get out of it. Like, I don't know how the country gets out of the situation that it's in. I know I won't go too far into it, but we're... It's gonna be tricky and it would be nice at this size of government in this community that we knew that we were in a safer position fiscally, financially than we are. Um, I'm certainly not in favor of borrowing, but at the same time, I know we're gonna do it. So, thank you.
So that's a half of a... Um, yeah, it, reluctantly, that's the realization that we're in. So, I'm there too. But I do wanna, you just mentioned, um, Jake had just mentioned talking about the time. I do wanna remember, we, last year at this time, we talked an awful lot about starting this process quite a bit earlier. And, um, there was pretty much general consensus. You can look at the minutes that came up a number of times we talked about. Um, we really need, and as a council, we didn't put the pressure on staff to start this process a lot earlier. And so I think we just need to find ways to do that. And I know there's certain times that they have to review their budgets and from the pre, you know, what they spent so far that year and so on and so forth. But I still think that, um, these kind of meetings should be had, August, September at the latest. But that's my feeling.
If you didn't, uh, catch it in my previous statement, I am for bonding and borrowing. But obviously, I think there's some ways to reduce our, our bonding amount this year. Um, so I think those are conversations yet to be had, but we need to borrow.
Your honor?
Yeah, I'm just gonna little clarify what you were talking about. You know, Tim last year spent a lot of time early in the year getting a budget ready for you with estimates. And he came and we presented it and council's like, well, we'll see you in the next three or four months.
I know.
You know, and so it's really the council that kinda said, ah, let's just push it off. And, and, and Tim spent a lot of time during a busy time of the year, that's usually not budget time, trying to squish all this together for council. And council's like, ah, we'll see it in four months. And so...
That was my statement. I said, staff did a great job.
Yeah, getting it together, but...
And we did not pressure staff. We, quite the opposite, he worked on it. And we did not pressure staff. So I was taking ownership of that.
Yeah, no, I don't think it's pressuring staff. I just... Yeah, no, I don't think it's pressuring staff, I just think, I think council just didn't act, or didn't further meet, or, anyways, you know, but, yeah, I'll be curious, because, you know, like, I keep going back, you know, we, we have these grand plans and hopes of, you know, reducing our borrowing, but as long as, as long as we wanna provide the services we provide, I don't think we provide like the Cadillac of services either. You know, we're not gonna cut our fire department, we're not gonna cut our police department, and we're not, our street department is bare bones already, so, I, I think it's, we, we all can hope, but being realistic, I don't see a council gathering enough support to say, yeah, we're gonna get rid of all this. There, I just don't believe it, and, 'cause I bet you the feedback and the, and the outcry from the public, you know, we heard with the, with the library, you know, with the people from the library, and that was, I hate to say it was only the library, but, but you cut your fire department in half, you bet you're gonna pack this room. 'Cause, or your police department, and I, I've worked shifts back in the day where calls were backed up, and I know what happens now, well, you cut your police department now, and you call the police officer for an emergency at your house, and they come there in a couple hours, like other cities, it's gonna happen. And you just gotta be realistic about it, and I just don't see anybody collectively, maybe individually, but collectively, that's gonna happen. And, I mean, we just have to accept what we're doing, and, and the nice big things that cost ten million dollars, maybe we don't need to do it, you know, and, and otherwise, that's your interest payments there. Thank you.
Yeah, just real quick, and, you know, the borrowing, and also, you know, I know we're gonna have the, the ARPA FEMA discussion and using that to, but also, too, you know, you know, if you remember from this year's note issuance, it's like, you know, as I close out the year, I kinda look at where if we have any type of operating surplus, because maybe we didn't fill positions, you know, that were budgeted for, or some revenues came in, you know, more favorably than was anticipated in the budget, you know, I, well, take some of those, take some of that operating surplus and apply it to, 'cause if you remember, we reduced the, the budgeted note issue for twenty-three by four hundred thousand, just 'cause we realized some of those reserves from a, a favorable operating year, so, and I'll do the same exercise this year. I know our interest earnings are coming in, you know, very favorably considered, you know, with, with the interest rate environment going up, that, you know, we'll, might be able to apply some of that to also reduce it, you know, so...
On favor? See you Tuesday.